The housing element, what the RENA actually means. There's a lot of, you know, different ideas about what that looks like. And I think it's best to do that prior to awarding a bid to a consultant. It's a month and two weeks that we would be, month and 10 days or so, that we would be delaying the process then. And I understand the constraints around the timing.
Can I maybe make a suggestion that might be a middle ground? To just think about this is that I agree with you that it's a really good idea that we do what you suggest. Is I wonder if it would be better to instead on March 17th, do that as well as have the joint meeting with the Planning Commission, potentially put off the Climate Action Committee joint meeting. And potentially EMC, even though they haven't been awarded this proposal, we could, we could still bring it for the April meeting to potentially award it. But I think that I know people on the Planning Commission that were sort of scheduling that. And I think it would be a good idea for us with the Planning Commission to really hear all of what you proposed, as well as the next steps. And maybe that shortens the schedule a little bit for Ben. It still doesn't mean that it's a done deal that we would award the EMC contract. But moving that to whatever that date is, April 7th, and then looking for an alternate date for a joint meeting with the Climate Action Committee. And so we really take that time to go over all this stuff with the Planning Commission as well. What Ben, your thoughts on, it still takes up some time. Is there any danger of us losing EMC since they were the sole bidder?
I think EMC is on board with, you know, whatever the town requests. I noticed that Andy Flower, if from EMC is listed as an attendee. I think when I spoke to him about the first steps, one of the things he stressed to me was really the first step is to lay out the public engagement strategy. I would also point out that the Planning Commission has agendized this twice already. We've done an overview. And on the planning webpage, we do have a discussion laying out what's involved with the housing element. We've also put out in the, in the town's news section, requesting, directing people, well, informing them of what's starting and encouraging them to sign up to get information about all the meetings or any public information that's circulated. So again, I understand this is really super important and going to be very high profile. But my, my recommendation is to go forward as proposed.
So the reason I, to me, something this big that we're going to be working on through.
2022.
To roll it out properly for the public to understand what it is that we're doing, why we're doing it, and to have a real community conversation about it or information session. So however that might look, I would really like to strongly propose that we do some kind of a study session presentation before we award a bid to a consultant to work on a housing element that the community doesn't know much about, regardless of whether we've got it in on the website, that comes later. It will, I think, save us a lot of, a lot of time and have a much better, robust community process doing it that way. I'd like to hear from my other council members.
Well, I've got a couple of thoughts. One is that the, the Climate Action Committee's joint meeting, which is scheduled on the 17th as well, is something that we've been working toward for many months. And actually, the Climate Action Plan has been, been worked on for a year and a half. And so people are very much ready for that. There's a presentation tonight about it. And so it would be disappointing to put that off. Although I understand you're trying to work out the timing. And then in my understanding from tonight's staff report on item 16 is that EMC, if we hired them tonight, would help with the joint session with the Planning Commission and being able to be there to explain things and answer questions. And for the public to get a chance to meet them at the, at the outset. So those are two thoughts.
Renee, I totally appreciate you raising this. One thing that comes to mind is a conversation I had with Garrett is they went out to bid to eight providers and only one responded. Is that, is that right?
Correct.
Then. So are you, are you concerned about, you know, scrutinizing this particular provider? Or you just want time to have time with the public?
Are you talking to me?
Yeah.
No, I just think that we assume too much when we think that people are all realizing that we need to update our general plan and that the housing element is a mandated part of the general plan and our RENA numbers are high. And those are the things people know. So to jump in to award a bid to a consultant prior to the community understanding at the very outset of the process seems to me to be ill conceived.
Right. And Bruce, can you remind me how much time we, the CAC, had allotted at that meeting?
We've been talking about an hour and a half with the joint planning, Planning Committee and Council meeting and an hour and a half approximately, maybe a little over for the CAC. And then immediately after that, we would go into a town council special meeting, which would be hopefully fairly short, but we keep seeing new things that we get added to it. But it's on the 17th. Sounds like it would still work according to that schedule.
Council member Goddard, I was just wondering if, if we left it on the agenda, hopefully we'll get to it based, you know, I mean, it's a long agenda, but it's mostly consent. But if we get to it and we hear from the public that there is concern or confusion around what it is, you know, might that be an indication that we should then, you know, not vote on that whole process and carry it forward like your plan? But if we're not hearing anything, then we can use that joint session as the opportunity to really discuss what this is all about?
So you say, yeah, are you suggesting leaving it on and then considering it for awarding the bid tonight?
Yes.
That I respectfully would push back against that. I, I having had the experience of going through this before, the rollout of something as big as this should be done delicately, clearly, and inclusively. And so I think for the month and a half, we're going to get a much better, like I said, I don't want to be a broken record. We're going to get a better process in, in the end. Then I'll leave it at that.
Did you already make a motion?
Um, I did not.
Do you want to make a motion?
So if I understand what you had proposed, it would be that we continue this item tonight to the April 7th meeting. That would be the meeting at which the bid would be considered. And between now and then, on the March 17th meeting, we would not have the joint meeting with the Planning Commission. But instead, in our council meeting, following the Climate Action Committee joint meeting, we would then do a, a, an explanation and take public comment just about the general task before us and what, what's all on the, on the table as far as what we have to do with the RENA numbers and the update of the housing element and where that's all coming from. So that people, the first thing people see is that just explanation with no action item being taken that night. Then the second thing would be on April 7th, we consider awarding the bid. And then on April 21st, the joint meeting with Planning Commission would happen. And that would be assuming that that was something that the Planning Commissioners could do. But is that correct as to what you are?
That is absolutely correct. Thank you for capturing it so well.
And on the 17th, council member Goddard, are you imagining that we would have a presentation from staff to illustrate what the roadmap is over the next two years as we prepare this housing element? Or what's the, what's the, the meat of that disguise? Is it just sort of?
Garrett just popped in, so I did speak with Garrett about this earlier. So Garrett, do you want to take that?
So yes, and then I'll have to add one thing. We, uh, maybe I can start. So we discovered that some people are having trouble logging in. And what we discovered is that in the agenda packet, the link is correct that goes live. But if you had the regular agenda itself and use the ID number on that, it's incorrect. So we're trying to resolve that right now, but that's a, a separate note. But yes, the, the thought pattern for the session anyway was we were going to have a presentation. Some of you may recall a year or two ago, we had a presentation from the Town Attorney's Office, a person providing information on changes in housing law, how it affected towns. So we thought we would do something similar where you're going to get an update on housing laws, previous housing laws, as well as an update on how the housing element works, any changes to the housing element and how the housing element works as part of the general plan, how RENA, regional housing needs allocations plays into that mix and why you have to do a housing element every eight years or cycles every eight years. And so we're going to, we're going to apply that general review anyway to the councils. So what would happen is we'll do that on the 17th as part of your special council meeting. We just won't have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and we won't have anyone from EMC participate in that, in that agenda item.
Just for clarification for my, for me, so what's, what would be the difference if we, as scheduled on the 17th, had a joint session with the Planning Commission versus not having them there to ask questions about the same stuff that sounds like it's going to be presented on either way?
And.
Actually, the primary, sorry if I may, the, the primary differences with the joint session with EMC there, they're going to go through what's being proposed as, as kind of the outreach strategy and the key elements of the housing element. One of the key aspects of that would be how we're proposing a certain subcommittee structure to work with the consultant and staff in that process. And so all that information really is needed to make sure the council and the community understand what the process is going to be. What would happen is without EMC, it would be more of a generic discussion of what is a housing element and what the deadlines are, but not a specific discussion related to how we see this working over the next 19, 20, 22 months of trying to get this housing element approved.
Okay, so just, just to, if, if that's where people want to go, I think that's fine. I'm worried about the delay and not having EMC. But I also think that it's worthwhile. Maybe it takes more time from the Planning Commission for them to hear this. Now, what was done a few years ago, and I think it was Katie Wazinski, who's now gone, did a whole presentation on all the housing laws at the time and density bonuses and incentives. And, and I think if we're going to do this on the 17th, then we should have that with any updates because we have at least two council members who weren't here. And I'm not sure if Bruce was here for that. But I also think the Planning Commission could benefit from that because it's really all the new housing laws, the laws that were talked about at the time, and I think that may have been even prior to the mayor being on the council, that was a lot. And then, and then there's more laws because I've downloaded all that stuff. And I think the Planning Commission could benefit from that if they have the time to participate in two joint meetings.
Thanks Barbara. I mean, that was my proposal, was that it take place during the spot that we would have had the joint session with EMC there, that we do it prior to awarding a bid. So I guess I could have made that more succinct from the start.
Barbara, you're suggesting, I like that suggestion, but you're suggesting that presentation on March 17th though, right?
Right. And, and I would say this for the benefit of having, and I'm not wanting to diminish the Climate Action Committee's work, but I think that should be first on the agenda. We've had a lot of issues with housing over the years. I think that should be the first thing on the agenda to cover the laws, the roadmap, all of that. Get everybody up to speed, including our newer council members, including people in the audience and as well as the Planning Commission. And if they, if they don't feel that they can do two meetings, then at least they can have the option of participating if they wanted to, just calling in. But it seems like, I think Renee and I have sat through some things that we thought it would be good to hit the ground running. And unfortunately, hitting the ground running caused a lot of distrust and suspicion. So this may be the better course of action of going along with March 17th, having that whole update on laws, including the old stuff that was not that old. And then the roadmap, where we are, how people be able to answer questions. Do the Climate Action Committee work after that? And then whatever else we have to do on that date. And then EMC would be on the 7th of April.
Correct. So could I make a motion to that effect? That I would approve the agenda and affidavit of posting continuing item number 16 to, actually, the April 7th meeting.
Second.
Is there any other thoughts on the agenda? Was there, Stephanie, you?
Yeah, I wanted to help me out with this. I wanted to move the council reports and comments. Where did I want to move that?
Right up to, I would say it would go, it sounds like probably either right before or right after open time. You, you might, you had earlier seemed to indicate before open time. This was to be able to do a short presentation. It would be, it was before open time. So in other words, it's coming up pretty soon if it's going to be pretty short.
Yeah.
Okay, so would that be?
Is that item two?
That is.
Item, the council reports and comments, which usually it's right before the town managers' report, right at the very end of our agenda tonight. So moving that up to the beginning of the agenda because it gives Stephanie a chance to say something that would need to be under council comments.
Okay. So then.
Offer that as an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. So I'll, I'll do a roll call on that unless there are any other comments or amendments to that. Okay, my internet is terrible, so people are freezing randomly. So I'm hoping that there aren't any. Actually, Michelle, would you roll call on that motion, please?
Yes, I will, Mayor. Council member Kohler.
Aye.
Council member Cutrano.
Aye.
Council member Goddard.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Aye.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Thank you. And.
Okay.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, this is Michelle Gardner. May I make a brief announcement about connectivity to Zoom? We did have a little glitch in that the agenda that was sent out last Friday to the distribution list for all those people who signed up for a town council agenda had an incorrect Zoom link on it. And the Zoom link on our website in the packet is working. And we are just replacing that agenda that's posted in our, on our website as well. So people will have the correct link when they go to the agenda or the packet. And we have sent out the correct link to the agenda distribution list now. So that should be resolved momentarily, just so people know. Thank you.
Okay, that's, it actually might work out that we have a little bit of time before we do open time then. Okay, thank you all for that. And so could I ask if council member Cutrano, you'd like to read the land acknowledgement this month?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewoc people of present day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging.
Thank you. So briefly, our meeting protocol, which we read because of earlier council resolution was to make sure we clarify this at every meeting. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and are ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public and to maintain standards of tolerance and civility. And we will review the agenda at around 10:00 PM to ascertain which items might be continued to another meeting. And any matter not started by 11:30 PM, we will continue or adjourn to another meeting unless the council agrees to suspend that rule. And so we have announcements. I'll read the announcements that are on the agenda and then we might have another announcement that, by other council members. So there are vacancies on boards and commissions. There, the applications are available on the town website or by contacting our clerk, Michelle Gardner. There's a one vacancy on the Planning Commission and application is due March 29th. The Climate Action Committee has up to three vacancies. We have kind of a variable number of members on that, but there are up to three vacancies and you're welcome to join us. The Open Space Committee has one vacancy. The Volunteer Board has one vacancy. And the Fairfax Food Pantry continues to do their amazing work. Saturdays, 8:30 to 10:30 AM at the Fairfax Community Church, 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Are there any other announcements that? Barbara?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce that many of you read that four local teens became the first class of females to become Eagle Scouts. And Fairfax's own Gina Schneider was one of the four. So congratulations to all our new Eagle Scouts. And council member Reed was an Eagle Scout and used to bring in proclamations for the mayor to sign. I hope he's still bringing those in. When I was mayor, I signed several of those, but it would be wonderful. And so good news and there's more Eagle Scouts, but it's great news that we're finally seeing women. Thank you.
All right. So we now will go to what was at the very end of the agenda. It's council members' reports and comments. And Vice Mayor Hellman, you two want to take that?
Are we at the?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, there's no more announcements?
Not that I know of, unless anyone else has anymore.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. It is my great honor and pleasure to recognize the following individuals for their service on the Fairfax Coronavirus Task Force. And so I will list you their names and I'm going to share with you just a brief list of our accomplishments and what our focus was. We, we came together in very short order just about a year ago. And the primary focus was to identify and support the vulnerable population in our community. And if you can recall, we developed those yellow door hangers. And we really covered the whole Fairfax community with them. So I will continue to share what we accomplished very briefly. But these, these members, and you will be receiving a certificate of appreciation, I don't know if you can see that, but Ms. Jody Timms, Maya Butterfield, George Taylor, Chance Cutrano, who is not a council member yet. He was a resident volunteer and member of several commissions. Joanne Lazner, Pamela Miggs, Stephen Kees, John Hanson of the Firewise Organization, and our staff member, program manager Maria Baird, hopefully she's with us this evening, and council member Renee Goddard. So thank you so very much. Briefly, we had our kickoff meeting on March 16th. We launched the volunteer one-on-one matching program on March 18th. And we identified about 45 vulnerable people in the population through our outreach. And we signed up about 170 volunteers. So that's remarkable as well. And they've continued to reach out to us and sign up to volunteer to do everything from grocery shopping to dog walking, et cetera. We also received a donation and were able to purchase masks. And the, the community can get free masks at Town Hall. And you'll see some new signage to keep social distancing and wear a mask downtown. And the ideation came from the Coronavirus Task Force as well. And we're very, very proud and so grateful for the volunteerism. And it's been a wonderful team to work with and I'm very, very grateful. So thank you so much for the time, Mayor.
Thank you to all those people and so many others who helped each other out. And we're still, we're still in it, but the home is visible here as we pull out of this pandemic and return to being able to see each other and take care of each other in person. Thank you. Okay, so now I think we can move to our, our famous open time for public expression. And so Michelle, town clerk, please open the public expression. And the way, the way that people do this, as, as probably most people know, is you raise your virtual hand, which on Zoom is if you're on a computer or your phone, there's a, there's a raise hand icon. And if you're on the phone, Michelle, it's star.
Six. Star six.
Star six, if you're, if you're calling in by phone to raise your virtual hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said it wrong. It's star six to unmute yourself, star nine to raise your virtual hand.
Raises your hand and you get called on, you use star six to unmute yourself. Okay.
Yes.
So Michelle, if you would, please open the public comment.
Sure, I'd be happy to. And I see three raised hands right now. The first person is Deborah Benson, followed by Larry Bragman. So Deborah, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you all for your Corona Task Force work, by the way. I'd like to, I'd like to make an observation about the, the order of the council meeting since we've had to resort to Zoom meetings. When you all are up there with everyone in the room on the days, you're pretty formal. And you listen to the public, you're not really allowed to make comment, you know, and in times of public expression, you're pretty formal and pretty professional. But since this whole Zoom world has started, I've noticed that that people have done, you know, gone from when someone speaks about something that's not in agreement with their personal view, sometimes there's eye rolling and sometimes even blacking out, like leaving the meeting. When there are people who speak of things that are that are in line with some people's personal views, there are thumbs held up. And there are thank yous to specific people if, you know, if their comments are in line with, you know, personal, personal views. And and I think that this needs to be a little more democratic. If anyone is going to be thanked for stating, for for speaking, then everyone should be thanked. And I don't think there should be thumbs ups to people particularly. I think that whole thing started back with the with the re-envisioning of the the parcade in the downtown with one of our consultants. So, you know, and I know you're sometimes eating and drinking and whatever, you know, I don't have so much of a problem with that, but I I really do miss the formality with with which you all purported yourselves when we were all there in the room together. And I I'd like to see that continue a little bit. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Deborah.
The next speaker is Larry Bragman, followed by a phone caller. It's the only caller who has a hand up, so you know who you are. So Larry, I've unmuted you.
And you'll need to unmute yourself as well, Larry.
Thanks, Michelle, and thanks, Mayor Ackerman and council. And good evening. Tonight is a little more of a formal comment. Coming to you from my position as your Director for Marin Water District. On February 16th, our board passed a drought awareness resolution. And what it meant was that we have strong belief that without a change in precipitation, we will be going into a mandatory water rationing situation in about 30 days in Marin County, sorry. So I wanted to Fairfax a heads up, frankly. We're right now at 45,000 acre feet total storage. Last year, we had about 20,000 more acre feet. And just to give you an idea, we between consumer, customer use and habitat releases every year Marin Water District in Marin is consuming about 32,000 acre feet. So right now we have about 45,000. We may have some more weather coming in, hopefully in the next month. But under our drought policy, if we're under 50,000 acre feet on April 1st, we're going to go into mandatory water rationing. So, or I should say water conservation more than it's it's not rationing at that point. And our customers have always been great conservers. But with everything else that's going on, including COVID, which has actually increased water consumption because people are staying at home, there's hand washing. It it's really not a time for us to go to be stingy with our use of water. Water consumption's actually gone up in Marin County. And that's going to have to change unless, you know, nature intercedes in our favor, which you know, I'm told maybe there's a weather pattern developing out off the coast. So I want to raise the issue with with you first. And wanted to let you know, one of the things we're doing is something I saw in Bolinas, which is making yard signs available to kind of raise people's awareness. And I sent a PDF of it to Michelle. And I don't know if she can put it up there right now, but it would be great if you guys could post it on the website. And basically what it says is drought is here. And go to our website and get some help reducing. We know everybody's already done a great job in Marin. But we need to tighten our belts even further. So not an easy thing to tell folks with everything else that's going on, you know. Also a reminder, there she goes. Thanks, Michelle. We have a great new conservation manager, Carrie, that has a lot of things and a lot of tools for people to use. And I'll just give you an example. One thing we discussed last night at our meeting was going from automatic irrigation to only automatically irrigating trees and hand watering the rest of your landscape. Because we know trees take a long time to nurture. We don't want to lose our trees. Other plants are are less of an investment. So we have a lot of ideas. And Fairfax has always been a great, great jurisdiction and a great community as far as conservation and sustainability. And here we are again. Again, we're all in it together. Once again. And, you know, we're going to get through it. We're working on a number of different approaches to make bring more water into our system from our remote reservoir at Sulehuli, which is Walker Creek, which is outside the Mount Tam watershed, as well as working with our partner in Sonoma County. So really, really appreciate the time. And if you guys have any questions, fire away. I'd be happy to to talk to you about any questions or concerns. One other thing. I wanted to reiterate, I would love to work with the town and with the council to actually review the town's water use to see if we could work with the town to implement some water conserving measures. It may be as simple as putting in weather precipitation sensitive irrigation, changing irrigation heads, that type of thing. So I I'd really like to do that. I've asked my staff at Marin Water District if they have, you know, the time and the energy to do it, and they do. And towns and other institutions are some of our biggest customers. And we can actually make the some big savings with big users. So that's kind of what I have to say. And good to see everybody working hard. And I think we're all trying to work hard. And not an easy job, but we're going to do it. So, you know, I'd probably use my three minutes or five minutes, but hi, yeah, sure.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question or make a brief comment? I I just thank you so much, Larry. And I'm wondering if we might schedule a brief presentation, as we used to do presentations, to have, I think you said Carrie, the new conservation manager, come to a meeting and just speaking to us as as residents and our as what we can do in our own homes.
Yeah.
That we get as much information out as possible, as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and absolutely. And I think they're planning it, but I'm always anxious to jump and get the word out quickly because it's going to take a while to ramp up. But yeah. And I think they're planning on doing that. So that's a great suggestion. So thanks.
Great.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay, thank you, guys. Okay, I guess I guess we're done. So have a good meeting. I'll I'll talk to you soon, okay?
Take care.
All right, thanks.
Michelle, say.
Sure. So the next speaker is a telephone caller, followed by Brian Poindexter, followed by Veronica Garretts. So phone caller. I've unmuted you. You might have to unmute yourself. By, oh, there you are.
Okay, hi. I'm Jason Minkler. I've addressed this body before. I have a short thing to say. The it's about a dog park. The Fairfax baseball field is closed to residents over 300 days a year. And apart from the summer picnic and maybe a couple of other events, it is the exclusive purview of the West Marin Little League. As the only grassy expanse in Fairfax, which incidentally requires a significant annual expenditure to maintain, I believe as our town's citizens should be entitled to share this wonderful resource with those kids. I understand and share your concern that the field must be pristine and spotless for baseball. As the pandemic dragged on, our town graciously opened it to local people and dogs on a limited basis. I put up over a dozen signs articulating the necessity for shared responsibility. It was incumbent upon me to be vigilant. And though the signs were pulled down as fast as I could put them up, their message resonated with dog owners. We picked up not only after our own pets, but our neighbors as well. This shared sense of purpose was demonstrated month after month throughout the calamity of COVID. The infield was off limits and only the only digging tolerated was done by golfers. Wisely, the park closed during rainy periods. And that, along with every participant's commitment to order and tidiness, rendered Candrati Field immaculate. Many of you have had the good fortune to buy your homes a decade or two ago. For those of us whose careers took us to far-flung outposts until we could retire, our property taxes are among the I pay $100,000 a year property tax and live on a street that is not maintained by the town of Fairfax. For the past eight years, every morning, I drive to Santa Anselmo to exercise my dog at their baseball field. That has added up to over 17,000 miles. For a place that considers itself environmentally proactive and progressive, that should be difficult to justify. It certainly is for me. The only reason Candrati Field is close to the taxpayers of Fairfax is the fear that its beauty and utility would be compromised by irresponsible people. But I submit to you that we have surmounted that challenge as as we have demonstrated for several months and will proudly continue to keep this jewel of our community in the enviable state it is today. Fairfax needs a dog park and we have one made to order in plain view. I understand there is tremendous reluctance to use Candrati Field, so if you have any ideas for some other location, I'm all for it. But I do believe that that we should consider a dog park for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brian Poindexter, followed by Veronica Garretts, followed by George Taylor. So Brian, you're unmuted.
Good evening, Town Council. As always, I just love and appreciate the opportunity for this open comment period. It really reflects on local democracy and that's a wonderful thing. I was struck after our last council meeting by comments made by Councilmember Kohler. Regarding the police MOU, or at least the discussion around that agenda item, Councilmember Kohler likened support of the police MOU to support of the broader labor movement, which I found curious. Given that police have often been used to suppress labor actions. So I Googled police unions labor movement as as my term. And the first couple of articles titles that came up were were surprising, given the claims to be made that police unions were were likened to the broader labor movement. Let me just read a few of the headlines there. Why Police Unions Are Not Part of the American Labor Movement Opinion. Here's How Police Unions Aren't Like the Rest of the Labor Movement. The next headline was Police Unions: What to Know and Why They Don't Belong in the Labor Movement. The next one, The Trouble with Police Unions. The next one. It's Time to Kick Police Unions Out of the Labor Movement. And that goes on. And again, this is just Googling for an ambivalent search term, police unions and labor movement. So I wanted to just spend a couple of minutes exploring some of the contents of those articles because I think it's important to clarify the history of of police unions. And I'll be quoting extensively from an article written by Paul Clark, who is the Director of Labor and Employment Relations at Penn State. In that article, he calls police unions the foot soldiers for the status quo. And and goes on to say the police, police have been on the wrong side of this centuries-old struggle between workers and employers. Rather than side with other members of the working class, police have used their legal authority to protect businesses and private property, enforcing laws viewed by many as anti-union. And goes on later to say, when worker ditched reform unions, companies called on local police to disperse union gatherings, marches, and picket lines, using violence and mass arrests to break the will of strikers. And another focus of that article is also the the very, very strong political affiliation of police unions with conservative political causes, including a poll of police conducted in September 2016 by Police Magazine that found that 84% of officers intended to vote for Donald Trump that November, which contrasts sharply with the 39% share of all union voters who voted for Trump. And then in addition, the article goes on to point out how police unions represented as part of the AFL-CIO represent just 2.7% of American police. So I think all of those things taken together suggests to me that that's at least a debatable claim made by Councilmember Kohler, and I just wanted to bring that to the public. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments, Brian.
Thank you. The next speaker is Veronica Garretts, followed by George Taylor. Veronica?
Hey, everybody. I just wanted to make a couple of announcements. On behalf of first the Volunteer Boards, that we're going to be hosting a community sit to honor or recognize the spring equinox. And so that's going to be on March 20th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM at Bolinas Park. It's a free event. We'll be distanced and it's a really no no frills opportunity to just sit quietly with your community. So we'd love for you to join us. And also ongoing on Mondays through the Park and Rec, I offer yoga for free as well for community members from 4:00 until 5:00 PM every Monday in Bolinas Park. And donations are welcome, they're not necessary. And donations get split between the town of Fairfax and Serge Marin. So it's available for beginners. Don't feel intimidated. It's a great space to try yoga out if you haven't before. Love to see you there. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. The next speaker is George Taylor, followed by Cindy Yopp. And Kyo, you're unmuted.
It's great to see everybody. Hello. And thank you for the ad hoc award, the committee award. When I got Stephanie's thoughtful email, I was thinking about the food pantry. And I was thinking how difficult their work has been during COVID. And I wanted you all to know that the food pantry is actually a function of the town. The town through the volunteer board supports the food pantry and so does the church. So it's actually a wonderful church and state collaboration. And the food pantry has, I believe the statistics are that is serving 50% more customers during COVID. And many of the food pantries in Marin shut down. So I think that there's been a tremendous community effort headed up by Larry and Holly, of course. And I believe that that group is also deserving of some kind of award or recognition from the town council. And there is a dedicated core of about 15 volunteers that are there regularly every Saturday for two to three hours. I have been one of those volunteers. I have been one of those volunteers, of course, but I took a break until I got my vaccine, which I did get, and now I'm back at the pantry. But I did want to say that because of the COVID restrictions, some of the communal aspects, the fun aspects of volunteering have diminished. There's not as much contact with the customers, and the volunteers can't actually hang out with each other as much due to the way the work has evolved. So the work is more difficult and less happy, and the core remains committed. So I really feel that they are an expression of Fairfax, the generosity and compassion of Fairfax. And I would love to see that group also have some kind of recognition, and particularly Larry and Holly, who have been on the front lines there for 10 years. They have been managing the food pantry for 10 years with intermittent vacation. So when I got Stephanie's email, I just thought, what about the food pantry? Let's do something for them.
Yeah. Thank you, George. Much appreciated. And thank you for your work on so many different ways. Michelle.
Yes, thank you. The next speaker is Cindy Yob, followed by Julia Ledyard. Cindy, you're unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me now? Good evening. This is actually Cindy Ross. Cindy Yob is just my Zoom name. And I wanted to say good evening to everybody. A part of me is really, really thrilled to be here. Very long story short, after I needed to have some work done at my house that was going to take probably a couple of months, and I ended up getting stuck in a temporary residence during the lockdown last year. And finally, about a week ago or so, I was able to move back into my house. So a part of me is really, really thrilled to be back here in Fairfax. But one of the things that the first speaker this evening for open time, I think it was Deborah, said something that really touched kind of a raw nerve with me a little bit about eye-rolling and informal stuff. And I can't say that that's been my experience exactly, but I have been a little bit frustrated that since, I believe it's August, I've been trying to address the council about an issue that has really been making things very, very difficult for me. I live very close to one of the laundromats at the Fairfax Plaza, and there is a terrible amount of off-gassing that is at times so overwhelming. It's been getting me sick. And I'm just really concerned. I know you can't really answer me right now, but I have sent at least three emails since August. The last one was dated February 16th, and no response. And I'm just a little bit frustrated with that. I really would appreciate if somebody would reach out to me, and we can discuss this and try to get it resolved. I feel like especially during the pandemic, when we have to be concerned about getting fresh air and, you know, for me to have to close my windows, not to be able to go out in my yard, you know, without getting sick, it is really, really a frustrating experience. And I just, you know, I would like to be taken seriously. I'm a longtime resident of Fairfax. A part of me, like I said, is really thrilled to be back home. But I really hope that you guys will work with me to try to resolve this situation in a way that it's not polluting the air, it's not getting me and my neighbors sick, and that I can breathe fresh air in my own home and neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you. The next speaker is Julia Ledyard, followed by Danette City. Julia, you're unmuted.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Ackerman and council. I'm just calling with an announcement. I wanted to let the council and the listening community know about a free film and pre-recorded panel discussion event that's been streaming. It's called Seven Acres in Chicago. Seventy, sorry, 70 acres in Chicago. It is co-sponsored by California Film Institute, along with Golden Gate Village Resident Council. And it is still available through tomorrow, and it's a wonderful, award-winning documentary. It is free, but you have to go to the website to get your streaming link, and you can get it at Smith-Raffel Film Center website. Seventy Acres in Chicago, it chronicles the demolition of Chicago's most infamous public housing development, which is called Cabrini-Green, the displacement of its residents, and the subsequent area gentrification. And why it's so important to watch is that this film charts a similar story to the plight of Marin City's Golden Gate Village, where gentrification and displacement would be the outcome of Marin Housing Authority's Private Partnership Mixed Income Plan to revitalize the Marin City public housing in that community. And then after the film is the pre-recorded panel discussion, and it's really great. It has the director of the film, Ronnet Fezis-Llel. There's an activist teacher from Marin City, Lynette Engeloff, who is also in the discussion, along with Terry Green, who's the executive director, and from Shore at Marin, she is also a Marin City resident. And Royce McLemore, of course, is the president of the Golden Gate Village Resident Council. So again, it ends after the end of the day tomorrow, but it's really worth watching. And I am still holding out hope that our town can really set a good example in our county by stepping up and supporting the residents of Golden Gate Village through a resolution. So again, you can stream this by going to Smith-Raffel Film Center website, and it is called Seventy Acres in Chicago. So I hope you all watch it. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Good night. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. The next speaker is Danette City, followed by Joe McGary. And Danette, you're unmuted.
Hi, thank you. I actually wanted to ask a quick question. There is an item on the agenda that I want to talk about, but I wasn't sure if this is the time to do it, or do I wait? Wait.
If it's on the agenda, we'll have public comment on that at that time. So this is this comment on items not on the agenda.
Okay, great. I wasn't sure about that. So thank you for clarification, and I'll wait.
Thanks for asking. I should have made that clear earlier.
Okay, so the next speaker is Joe McGary. You're unmuted.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, council. I just would like to speak to two weeks ago at the special meeting during the discussion around the MOU extension, there became a narrative that was planted by, that was started by some some citizens who were speaking up and then seemed to be almost reinforced by the appreciation and adulation for the Police Officers Association coming forward and volunteering to extend the contract. And that was that the police are not getting raises this year. And that is simply not true, that in quite contrary, the Fairfax Police Department was given their raises or a plan for raises a year early on April 1st, 2020, with the side letter that was added to the MOU. So every police officer in town will get a raise as they reach certain times served. They will also have their vacation time extended. There were nine items listed in that side letter that all had financial pieces to them that will still be going on this year. So there has been no freeze of wages, none of that. So I just wanted to clear that for the community, because it has been a topic that's been going around town now is that the police have volunteered to go for a year with a freeze on wages, and that's just not true. And it's also interesting to look back at that staff report in March of 2020. The reason that all these things were added to the police contract a year early was to deal with the problem of retention that was existing. And I want to point out that that was prior to the murder of George Floyd and prior to activists and, you know, and what was, you know, what came about in our town in terms of activism? And because that's often been used by, I've heard it from Lieutenant Rico. I've heard it from other members of the council that the retention issue right now with the police department is directly related to activism. And that just isn't true by the staff report, that this has been a longtime problem for Fairfax retaining its police officers. So just wanted to clear the air on a couple of those items. And just be caution once again about framing activists as part of the problem and asking folks to be reasonable or being, terming folks as divisive is really, yeah, it's just reinforcing the status quo, and folks are looking for change. So when they speak up, let's not use that language, and let's embrace all ideas. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Mayor, I do not see any more public comments if you want to close the open time.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. So we will, well, I think we might have one more. Is that before we close it, Michelle, I think we have one more hand that just went up or just backed down?
I think it just went back down.
Going twice.
Something we've done.
We'll close the public comment on, that was the public comment on items not on the agenda. We'll have public comment on each item as we go through them. Okay, thank you for that and for all the comments. We will now move to the consent calendar, which has quite a few items on it. And there, I'd just like to offer just a couple of comments on those. Congratulations to the Finance Director and the Finance Department or the.
Mayor, I'm sorry. You actually have a presentation.
Garrett.
Sorry, you actually have a present. Can you hear me? You actually have a present. Sorry, you had to.
Okay, yeah, all right. Coming up now. Yeah, that was what that hand was. Okay, so we've got the presentation next. And this will be Garrett, do you want to introduce the presentation? How do we do that?
Sure. So I think how it works is you'll know on consent, as you were getting to that, you actually have the updated Climate Action Plan prepared by the Climate Action Committee. And what we thought would be beneficial is Jody Timms from the Climate Action Committee will make a brief presentation on the plan. But the thought pattern is any questions or comments should be reserved for the joint special study session between the Climate Action Committee and the council scheduled for March 17th. This is just to get all the information out so people have time to digest all the information and come to that study session with any questions or comments they may have. So with that, I think all we need to do is promote Jody to be a panelist, and then I can load up the PowerPoint.
Okay, just before the PowerPoint goes up, let me say good evening, council members, Jody Timms. I really want to thank you for giving us the time on the agenda tonight, and I am your spokesperson on behalf of the Fairfax Climate Action Committee. And we have brought you and the community a draft updated Climate Action Plan, or CAP 2030, which we hope you'll receive. And then again, in two weeks at the special meeting on March 17th, we will collectively have a chance to dive into the details of this 83-page document. So I am ready for the PowerPoint, and I'm going to move us through this kind of quickly. So slide one. Here we go. Wait, back one, back to the previous slide. There we go. Okay, so a couple of comments here first. So we hope really that this very forward-thinking cap will actually put us on the map and give our town's very ambitious visionary goal, given our very ambitious goal of zero emissions by 2030. We, as a Climate Action Committee, have done the best that we can to bring you a set of strategies and actions that could accomplish that goal. And we're excited to eventually hear everyone's thoughts and ideas on the first best effort at one way to get us to zero. So next slide shows the resolution. This resolution is basically our birth certificate. The Climate Action Committee was created as part of the general plan 10 years ago with the responsibility to create and implement a cap or a climate action plan. The next slide. Okay, so this is a picture of the cover of our first cap, which was approved in 2014, and it has guided the actions of the town over the last six years. And as you can see, it established a target to reduce greenhouse gas emissions for the town to 20% below the 2005 levels by 2020. Next slide. So this graph represents our progress as of 2018. You can see that we've had a 25% reduction versus our goal of 20%. So we did better, and we got it done earlier in 2018 rather than 2020. You'll also notice that most of our emissions are from transportation, which is the big blue bar across the bottom, and then also residential energy, the one just above that. So next slide. And actually, between 2005 and 2018, emissions per person, as you can see, dropped from 5.43 tons of carbon dioxide to 3.96 tons. And that turns out to actually be a 27% reduction because the population of Fairfax did increase slightly. So based on per capita, we actually hit a 27% reduction. Next slide. So this short little paragraph is part of the town's climate emergency resolution passed in March last year. We were the first town in Marin to pass one, and we have been the only town to set such an ambitious goal. But we are not alone. There are six other cities in California that have set this goal, including Sebastopol, Santa Rosa, and Petaluma to the north of us, and 13 cities nationally have also set a goal of zero emissions by 2030. And internationally, there are 1,904 declarations of climate, climate emergency declarations across 34 countries. So we're definitely not alone. Next slide. Okay, so how did we get here? We have been working. There's been a subcommittee of a cap update as part of the Climate Action Committee, and we have been meeting actually for 18 months. We started last, or in August of 2019. So we've spent many, many hours, volunteer time doing research and writing. We've had tremendous support from Christine O'Rourke, the consultant that's part of, that is chairs or holds the space for the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership that assists all the towns. So Christine came up with a template for the latest version of the climate action plans. That was taken to San Raffel, and they updated it or customized it for themselves, then Santa Anselmo did. And for us in Fairfax, we used both of those two plans and, of course, customized the plan for ourselves here in Fairfax. We've also done, did a three-month survey that hopefully some folks responded to. We had 110 responses from town residents. And we've also held four public meetings to review various pieces of the cap, though we haven't had the kind of attendance we had hoped to have. We've had a few people each time. Next slide. Okay, so this slide just basically shows the rage of Mother Nature. As we know, fire and drought, as we've also heard about tonight from Larry, are two major effects of climate change. Over 4 million acres burned in California last year. And you can see also from the charts, the precipitation, the rainfall, not looking so great so far and likely to not be where we want to see it in this year. and likely to not be where we want to see it in this year. Okay, next slide. All righty, and so this is the cover page of our, at the moment anyway, the cover page of our new draft plan. It is posted for review and comment at the climatefx.org website. And of course, it's also on the town's website with tonight's agenda and also on the 17th. So hopefully folks will get a chance to take a look at it before the 17th. At the very beginning, you'll find a summary page of what individuals can do to work on climate change initiatives and also a vision for Fairfax for 2030. And to accomplish the goal really of zero emissions by 2030, there are eight categories that are full of strategies in the plan. And the first, the one that we put right up front is community outreach and engagement. Because without everyone's help and support, we won't be able to accomplish this goal. But we are determined and we know that Fairfax will step forward. So next slide. This is right out of the CAPA. What is a climate action plan? It is a public document that helps us understand how our community contributes to climate change. It sets the targets for how we want to reduce those contributions by certain timeframe. And it outlines a path for us to meet that goal. So next slide. We were guided by a number of values that you see listed here as we've been working on the cap and as other cities have as well. And in Fairfax, we took the, the value of equity, social equity, and put it right up front in our cap. It is deeply, it is a deeply connected issue with climate change. And as we know, communities that have contributed the least to global warming suffer first and most from the consequences of it. We'd also like to encourage members of RESJ and others in our community, of course, to take a look at the plan and if they can, to help us ensure that equity really is centered throughout the work that we do for climate, addressing climate change in our community. Next slide. All right, so here, this also is inside the cap for reference. It is the three scenarios. You can see our actual emissions in the blue line for Fairfax. Business as usual will take us straight across with no changes to our emissions. The state goal, as you can see, is out of slope and, and set for further out than ours. But our Fairfax cap goal is zero emissions by 2030. And I just want to mention that the, the emissions that we deal with in this cap are based on strictly local emissions rather than life cycle emissions. And the difference between those are explained in the cap. But life cycle emissions are actually 4.7 times greater than those that we're able to monitor closely and that are really dealt with in the cap. But I, okay, next slide. So this is page 47, right out of our cap. And within the eight strategies that are delineated, there are 28 actual actions that we hope to take. Christine has taken each of those actions and calculated the amount of reductions that we can hope to accomplish by each of those actions. And that totals, as you can see, 29,988 metric tons. I also want to just mention that, of course, all actions that are listed here or eventually part of the adopted cap, any of those actions that have budgetary or regulatory components would, of course, come before the council and the community for approval and support throughout the next 10 years that this cap covers. And next slide. So we're not doing this entirely, of course, by our, by ourselves. The state will have to be contributing and based on their current projections and their plans. You can see those there, our total goal to get Fairfax to zero is 31,484 tons that we would decrease our emissions. And then our last slide. As Nelson Mandela said, if you want to go quickly, go alone. But if you want to go far, which this is, we need to go together. And I just want to reiterate that we're going to, of course, need everyone for this sea change. We're going to need to be working together toward this common and ambitious goal. Our residents, our businesses, the staff, all of our local government committees and commissions, and of course, the county, the county's climate action plan, drawdown Marin, state initiatives, federal initiatives, funding, et cetera. No easy task. And in finishing here, I just want to thank all the members of the Climate Action Committee and our chair Walt Vernon for our PowerPoint and all the support and work. And I believe Christine O'Rourke might also be watching tonight. So I don't know that you have any questions for either of us. We had, we were assuming we're going to hold off on those till the 17th. But that is our presentation. Did I do 10 minutes? I hope.
Not sure. I think you might have beat the clock on that. But thank you so much, Jody. And so again, the climate action plan in its current draft is now in the packet tonight. And so council members have a nice printed copy to scribble all over. And that's one way that it's easy for members of the public to access. It is just to go and look for our packet or look on the climatefx.org website. And this will all be discussed in more detail in a joint meeting between the Climate Action Committee and Town Council at our next council meeting, two weeks from today on March 17th. So we'll, we'll get into all of those programs and really talk about what this all looks like.
And many thanks to Christine, too. I don't think I quite said that, but she's been a huge resource for us. So thank you very much, Christine, if you're out there. Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you, Jody.
Okay. Sorry to have skipped over that for a moment, but that's, that's an important thing we're working up to talking about on the 17th. So coming back to the consent calendar, then, one of the items on the consent calendar is simply accepting that draft climate action plan, which, which is in our packet. And there are a number of other items. I wanted to just express thanks to the, sorry, I'm getting myself organized here. Express my, my thanks and the thanks on behalf of the council to Mimi Newton for stepping up to another term on the planning commission. That's a lot of work and Mimi is always well-prepared for that. We'll consider that on the consent calendar to reappoint her for another term. And, and also thanks to our three in this town, artists in residence, whose terms were also extending on the consent calendar. And I have a question for you, Michelle, just as far as procedure. On item five, I would like to make just, this is authorizing the mayor to send a letter to Senator McGuire opposing SB nine. And I would like to make a very small amendment to that letter. If that would be okay, I'm wondering whether we should pull that from consent. I would hope we could just do it very quickly. It's like a three-word change, but that's, I'm wondering how we do that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, a clarification. The council is authorizing you to send a letter. The letter is just a sample letter. As the mayor, you can make adjustments or if council members.
Okay.
Suggest you do that. So you don't have to wordsmith. That's the whole.
We won't, we won't take time with that tonight. Okay, does anybody have any, the questions for staff on the consent before we go to public comment? Barbara?
Well, I have two things. And just a reminder that we had a supplement for, I believe, item, maybe it's item seven and eight, but I just have, there was something missing on the minutes from January 20th on page seven. It talks about council member assignments and it needs to include the Measure K Oversight Committee for me, which was missed. But I have a question as to item eight. There was a supplement that included some of the changes that I had asked for. And there's a, just a couple of things that I don't know that they're that clear. So I don't know if I should ask those now or just wait. And I don't know that we need to pull it, but I would defer to you, Mayor.
Well, I'll just ask Garrett for your recommendation. Do we, I saw that as well. Personally, I agreed with those changes. I don't know whether all the council members saw them, but that was a supplement with some redline changes suggested by council member Coler. Do we, how do we proceed to?
The supplement would replace, that's what you would actually approve. If the council wanted to discuss anything related in the sup, in the supplement at any level of detail, then you would need to pull the item. If it's more of a matter of a question or one adjustment, then you really don't need to pull it from consent unless you really want to get into a broader discussion. At least that.
Councilmember Coler, are you talking about Exhibit B or what specifically are you talking about?
Exhibit B, and there's just one thing I wanted to throw out for discussion. And that is item four. And I know last time I brought this up, the nine to sunset. And because there are people that live near that and skate parks can be sort of loud, I was suggesting rather than sunset, because sunset is going to change pretty soon, that maybe we say six o'clock. But I don't know if others like that. So I'm just going to throw that out there and maybe we have public comment and then bring it back to see if.
I don't know. I remember you said that and I, I remember we agreed on sunset and revisiting it at the six-month point.
Okay, that's, okay, well, maybe I completely forget. I don't remember agreeing to that, but it sounds like other people don't want to change it. So I'll defer to the group. I just was. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Take my hand down.
Maybe, maybe I'll just ask if we could just get a show of hands from people in the public who would like to speak to the skate park issue particularly. And if there are none, then we won't pull it.
It looks like there's no one.
Not seeing any. Okay, so unless one has a motion, contrary, we would not pull any items from the consent calendar.
Mayor? If I may, could we go back to number five, just as a procedural question? So we're not going to, we're not going to noodle the language tonight on the letter. But how do we proceed if we have some, some noodling that we'd like to contribute? Is it going to be that?
I mean, I can tell you right now what the change is if you'd like. And you'll see that it's not anything significant.
It's, I just wondered.
Doesn't seem significant. But.
I just wondered if there were others that had anything that needed to be fleshed out at all in the letter. I do.
Okay.
Let me just mention one thing. So I sit on the MCC MC Legislative Committee and we took an opposed position on this, whenever that was, a week ago. And it was the same letter. So, and this is the same bill that failed last year, which was 1120. And it was the same sort of issues that we wanted amendments to. So this is basically asking for amendments. It's opposed unless amended. It's not saying completely opposed. So just throwing that out there, but maybe we should pull it just to, I don't know. What do you suggest, town manager?
I think typically, because it's a letter from the mayor, what you could do is, and I don't know what the council comments are, but if an individual council member had a couple of wordsmithing things, they could talk directly to the mayor and then the mayor could just decide, okay, that sounds good. Or no, I'm going to keep it the way it is because it's a letter from the mayor. That's what I propose because I don't think anything, I could be wrong, but I'm probably guessing anything that you would suggest isn't going to dramatically change the intent of the letter.
That sounds good.
Ms. Renee, because you, you had just said, Councilmember Goddard, that you had some thoughts about this letter. So if you'd like to make a motion to pull it, I'm happy to agree with that. And if it's very minor changes, then just discuss it with me.
Yeah, it's minor enough that we don't need to pull it because it would just be, it would just be, as I said, noodling and not, not of great substance. So I will, I will connect with you on that.
Okay, please do. I'll be, I'll be signing that very quickly. Okay, so maybe we're ready for a motion on approving the consent calendar items? Oh, well, we need to get. So Michelle, would you open public comment for the consent calendar items?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So anyone who wants to comment on any of the consent items should raise their hand now. And I see one hand. It is Deborah Benson. And Deborah, I've unmuted you.
Thank you, Michelle. I would like to speak on item one, the financial reports, September through December of 2020. I'm aware that the town has been successful in installing much-needed new software. However, I'm looking at a check register that shows somewhere in the, in the realm of 300 checks spending over $2 million that have no memos. The old program afforded us a column to say, for instance, we're paying California infrastructure, $20,000 for the Azealia Bridge, the Creek Bridge, we're paying the law firm, the law firm for September work. And there are no memos in, in all of these check registers. So, so we have no way of knowing what the money being spent is for. And I would like to see a column added with memos so that the public has, there's some transparency and the public has some way of knowing where their money is going. And in fact, I would like to see these check register, registers that have been submitted, revised to include that information. Hi, Michael.
Hi.
How are you?
So I'm doing very well. Thank you for that comment. We do have several variations of reports that we can do, but we can't really customize these things until we get a little bit more training on doing custom reports. The check register can be done with all of that detail in it. It'll be about five or six lines per check. So this particular check register would, would be five or six times as large. I, I, I erred on the side of brevity. If somebody wanted to ask me as an example, what's the detail of this check or that check? I'm happy to, to provide that kind of detail. Or if the council really wants, I can make it a larger register.
I would like to see the detail on every check.
And can I just ask a question of our, Michael? Before, I'm looking at what I believe Deborah's looking at, which is all bank codes, check summary, which has over $2 million. But before that, there's a report called Check Report, which lists out what I believe are the individual checks by number and amount. And the numbers aren't exactly the same as the total. The total is 2.04004, whereas the check summary is 2.012. But I'm not sure, maybe I'm not reading this correctly, but the check report looks, which is before the summary, I believe outlines all the checks for most of them. Am I reading this wrong?
Well, there are several kinds of reports in there. Some, some do all dispersments, which includes expense EFT-type transactions or other things like that combined in with it. I'd be happy to, to share some of the different kinds of reports to the council and see what, see what reports they think might be the most useful.
Well, I would volunteer to work with you on that. And maybe I can talk to Deborah a bit. At least the check report I'm looking at is almost the same amount as the check summary. So why don't we follow up on that? And maybe we can hook Deborah in on a Zoom call as well. Would that work?
Sure, if that, if that.
I have a suggestion, if I may interrupt. If that's okay.
Yeah.
So I looked at the old report. I see what, um, Deborah Benson is referring to. I think it's as simple as working with Michael and trying to see on the report if we can eliminate some of the columns. Because the columns, and I don't know about the report and how much more training we need. But we understand, I don't think we have an issue. It's just that in this report, it has some columns that calls it regular discount amounts. So I don't know at this point if we have, we're trained enough to hide columns, to add columns. So I get it. Why don't you just give us some time to work through the system to get that level of detail? And if we can do it, we'll do it. If, for some reason, we need a lot more training, then we'll, we'll let you know. Again, new system and just let us get, get rolling and then we'll try to address that, address that concern.
Uh, to me, that's a good suggestion because, um, we know what the old report looked like and it was simpler to read.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank Deborah for that comment.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for that observation, Deborah, and, um, congratulations, Michael, on getting this all working and we'll get the, get the glitches worked out of it. And, um, I'm sure it's working a lot better under the, uh, under the hood to keep track of things. So, thank you.
Um.
Hey. Comment.
Deborah was, oh, sorry. I, I think Deborah wasn't quite finished with her comment. We all. So. Deborah?
You're muted.
I, I just wanted to say thank you. You know, so for any, any, uh, any improvement we can, we can make. I just wanted to say thank you, everyone.
All right, great. Thank you, Deborah.
Okay, I don't believe we have any other co- comment on consent.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council then. And do we have any further discussion or on the consent calendar?
Um, I, I would go ahead and make a motion that we, um, approve consent with, uh, the addition of the supplement, uh, number eight, in number eight. Is that correct, Barbara? Okay, so I don't think we've moved anything else or changed anything else or pulled anything.
I'll second that.
The amendment to the minutes, I believe.
With the amendment to the minutes.
Yes, so it was supplement to number eight and amendment to the minutes.
So I made a motion and then Councilmember Catrano seconded.
Oh, okay, sorry, I missed that. Okay, motion by Goddard, second by Catrano. Um, I'll take the roll call in this case. So, uh, Councilmember Coler.
Hi.
Councilmember Catrano.
Hi.
Councilmember Goddard.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Holman.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Stephanie, if you prefer. And I'll vote. Okay.
Mayor, could I, could I just ask one thing? When, when we approved the ordinance, since the resolution for the skate park is all part of that with the rules, could we post those together on the website so people are clear? We don't always post resolutions and rules, but I think it would be good if the skate park information was all together in one piece.
Yeah, we also want to, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
No, you, the question was to you. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, I think it's a great idea, and particularly the rules are probably what are more relevant. The ordinance was just allowing us to set.
Well, the ordinance is always get posted, Mayor, but I think sometimes we don't post resolutions that include rules. And I just think this is a really important thing for us. So let's get it all in one piece under Skate Park.
Okay, so that's, uh, a direction to, I guess it would be to, uh, Michelle Gardner, to just make sure that those, that the rules in that resolution are posted as well with, with the ordinance.
Yes, I will do that.
May I add something, Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's our intention to post the rules, have signage as well there. So it's very clear to the community, particularly the users of the park, the hours and, you know, no littering and all that, all, all the very, you know, the noise and all that kind of stuff. So that's, that's absolutely our intention as well. Councilmember Coler.
I knew that and I'm glad that you clarified that. I think that would be really helpful. Great.
Okay, all right, thank you. So now moving on to the regular agenda, the next item 13 is to receive a presentation. And first, a staff report on the Redwood Tree Maintenance Plan. Garrett, would you?
Yeah, before I turn it over to Ray Moritz, um, yeah, we, we did ask the Town Arborists, Urban Forestry Associates, that's Ray Moritz's company, to prepare. What we attached was the Redwood Tree Maintenance Plan for the trees in Perry Park. Um, Ray is going to make a presentation on his plan. I just wanted to point out, staff intends to work with Ray on the implementation of the plan. One thing, as you heard from Larry Bragman, related to MMWD, is we will need to work with them on the cost structure for the watering, uh, when they, you know, voluntary restrictions or whatever. So we just need to, some things we need to check on in terms of what that could possibly cost. Uh, we'll work with Ray to see if we could, um, curtail watering in other, other places and other parks to somewhat offset that added costs. But anyway, that's something we'll need to be working on. With that, I think all we need to do is promote Ray to be a panelist. Michelle?
Uh, that has been done, I believe.
Well, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ray, if that's okay, unless there's any questions for staff.
Oh.
We'll have a chance to ask questions of Ray as well, so. Great, okay, Ray, thank you.
Hey, I'm going to, uh, have to turn up my, sound a little bit because I can barely hear you, Bruce. Okay. Um, so I produced a report. Uh, I went into some detail uh, about why the stand's very poor health for a redwood stand. Uh, is what it is. And, um, if you read through the report, you would uh, get more of an understanding of the fact that it was a site that was logged probably the early part of the last century or the last part of the previous century, the late 1800s. And this is, uh, mostly second growth redwood. And that, um, second growth redwood does not have the health, the longevity, or the structural stability of first growth redwood. First growth redwood is truly amazing. Uh, it is the shallowest rooted, but the most structurally stable of its associate tree species. And so it's, uh, has no killing diseases, uh, is very resistant to decay. Second growth redwood's another story. Um, because they are attached to a mother stump, foresters refer to the new sprout stems as daughter stems. Uh, because they're attached to the mother stump, the decay in the mother stump as it decays, which is called brown cubicle rot, can enter through the attachment to the daughter stems into the daughter stems themselves. And that's what we've seen occur in this park, that many, many of the trees have what we call heart rot. If you enter the stand over closest to the children's playground and you walk in there, you'll see two broken off stems almost immediately. And you'll also observe in the center a red sort of blocky material. That's brown cubicle rot of the heartwood of the redwoods. We can certainly, with older trees, it often becomes a race between growth and decay. And, um, speak, speaking of carbon sequestration, decay releases CO2, growth entraps or sequesters CO2. So if you have sort of an even battle between growth and decay, you really aren't banking any carbon. So it's, um, from a carbon perspective, it's also not as truly incredible as a first growth stand. Um, so that's one of the problems we are dealing with in terms of tree health. They're quite stunted. They're also stunted because of uh, relatively poor water availability, at least for that last half century. Uh, I remember when I first came to California, we had just gotten over the, um, uh, 19, I think it was the 1970s drought or the late 60s. And, um, we've had a lot of droughty periods ever since. Uh, and so the stand is more water starved, but there are other factors contributing to that being water starved. One is the fact that we have scarified soils with no mulch. Redwood, because it's shallow rooted, the roots are sensitive to changes in soil temperature. Cooler soil temperatures favor, uh, absorbing root, what people commonly call feeder roots, absorbing root growth. 90% of the absorbing root of a redwood tree is in the upper foot to six inches of soil. So if you don't have a nice mulch layer on there, that soil heats up in the summer and it kills back the absorbing roots. Now, many people might think that, oh, well, you know, the soil's dry during the summer anyhow. But that's not really true for trees. Because, um, clay molecules, what they call the clay my cells, entrap mortar, water molecules. Clays are polar, water molecules are polar. They attach to the clay particles. And although it feels dry to us, trees are able to emit chemicals that release that water. And also, most importantly, the, um, fungi that help trees also are able to do that. So, um, the fact that we're heating up our soils because of the lack of a deep mulch layer, which if you walked in a wild redwood forest, you know, you're walking on a very spongy type of mulch material that's typically quite deep. In an old growth forest, not unusual for it to be 12 inches deep. So we need to mulch that area very strongly if we want to start these trees on a road to recovery or at least, uh, increase their growth and overall health, which is quite poor. The other thing I was recommending, uh, was to, um, aerate the soil at the time that we mulch it. And there are hand aerators and there are, um, motorized ones that can be rented. And it goes through and what it does is it breaks up that crust of surface soil, which is compacted by use, by human use. And it breaks up that crust. And if you do it after you've got down a layer of mulch, fine pieces of that mulch enter that broken up crust. And that keeps it from being recompacted. Also, your mulch layer favors insect and worm activity, which also decompacts the soil. So, um, it's really important that that soil get decompacted so that rainwater, instead of running off on that front, over that crust, gets absorbed into the soil and provides for good groundwater recharge. The, the stream bed is approximately eight feet below the average grade of the forest. And so the water table is quite low. And a water table can develop what's called a capillary fringe. Fine, um, what am I trying to say? Find, uh, tubes, so to speak, or cracks in the soil. Uh, allow water to move up above the water table to where the roots can easily access it. And, um, that capillary action, uh, though, has been discouraged by the fact of the scarification of the soil, causing soil fines, fines to go down and fill those soil pores. So the porosity is also quite poor and it can't take advantage of that capillary action. So there's a lot of things that we can improve on simply with mulch and some breaking up of that compacted crust. The other thing I had first considered was, um, adding some compost, some rich compost, because that would add to the mulch, the type of bacteria that would break down the mulch and create, uh, a recycling composting going on. But I priced it and it would cost $18,000 to cover that area with compost, which maybe we just have to rely on a slow, um, composting of the mulch layer. Then also, I feel that any materials removed from the redwood forest should be kept in the redwood forest. Trees in a natural environment, everything gets recycled. Nothing gets removed from the site. For decades, when trees were removed or fallen branches were removed, everything was taken away. I was driving along and I saw the Tree Man Tree Service back there. They're removing that, uh, unstable alder and that partially fallen dead medrone back there along the creek. Uh, and, um, I said, no, 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 don't put that in the truck. We want that in our forest. We don't want any minerals or nutrients leaving our forest. So that should be our approach always, is that everything in the forest stays in the forest. Then finally, uh, I talked to Garrett and Ben about this. Uh, I don't know how much I went into detail about it in the, uh, report. But I think any tree that gets removed because it's structurally unsound or has died and, and one redwood has died more recently, should be replaced with a redwood tree. And, um, actually, a 15 gallon redwood tree becomes established faster than bigger sizes. So I would suggest that every tree that gets removed gets replaced. But also, we might want to account for some of the trees that fell or were removed in the past. And so, um, I would suggest that we do some planting. I talked to Garrett and Mark and, uh, Ben about, um, perhaps as many as 15 trees in the next year. And there are certainly sites where that can occur. One of the sites in the forest, which was largely alder and bay laurel, uh, if you know the part over closer to the footbridge, uh, where the, um, what do they call the? The Italian lawn bowling type thing. Yeah, uh, that area. That area is totally scarified. And that's just going to be removing soil from that environment. Because that evaporation off the soil is gonna. Because that evaporation off the soil is gonna aid with it. So I would suggest also if we can get tree men to give us clean chips to be dumped over there, that we do it. And that perhaps that site should be converted gradually over time to redwood forest. Redwood forest over the eons, the main, the next generations of people, our children and children's children would, would be the best carbon sequestration we could possibly have. So I would suggest that we progress toward a first growth redwood forest where trees can live hundreds and hundreds of years and sequester carbon for all that period. And so that's what I suggest as a plan for the forest. If you have any specific comments, you'll notice this says draft plan. And that is because I never finalize a plan until my clients have a say in its contents. So I'm open to hearing contents and I've got my pad right here. If you want to do that this evening, or if you'd rather email it to me. My email is ray@urbanforestryassociates.com. So with that, Mr. Mayor, would you want to have some comments taken?
Well, I'm sure there will be. I'll start with Barbara because her hand went up first. And thank you very much for that summary of your report and for all your work on it. This is very, very helpful.
Thank you, Ray. As always, I really liked your report. I thought it was really helpful. And I did have a question. I have two questions, but one is I had a question about the replanting of trees and I think you answered that. We did remove, I can't remember if it was eight to ten trees that had fallen over or were dead. And what I heard you say tonight, that you suggest we replace those trees as well, and I'm all for that. But what I also thought I heard you say is rather than replacing, for example, an alder, that we should just replace every time with a first growth redwood tree. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. And the other thought I have, you know, I know you mentioned the compost and the cost was really high. I'm wondering if potentially we can get maybe not as much compost as we'd envisioned, but get some compost also from Marin Sanitary because they do give us compost. But I, I do think that we ought to really think about that compost because there is so much use in that park, which does cause the scarification. And so I'm for whatever we can do there. And I liked your idea about bringing the clean chips to the Bache Court area and potentially starting to replace some trees there as well. So I don't know how many this is adding up to. I know you talked about planting fifteen new trees in the next year, which I completely support. And those would be the fifteen gallon redwood trees. One of the things through my work, I, I do some climate change work. And I remember reading an article and working with Todd Steiner and company out in the valley that redwood trees can sequester carbon for like a hundred years, even after they're dead. And I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but I think the idea of replanting with redwoods is perfect because we are going to get more carbon sequestration. So I know you're writing this down on your pad. I'm for replacing those fifteen trees this year. Making sure that we really have a plan for filling in the Bachi Court and whatever we can do to replace whatever trees we did take out. And then also, you mentioned the valley oaks in your report. And you mentioned cultural care. And forgive my ignorance, I like the idea, I just don't know what it is. So could you share with us what cultural care is?
Sure. Cultural care is preventing soil compaction, providing mulch. And from the extent of tree stability is regularly observing the trees and providing stability when it's needed. There's a great deal of concern by James McNair, who was, is a consulting arborist who was brought in by a community group to look at the plan for tree removals. And and also my two associates, Ben Anderson and Zach Vogt, also expressed great concern about the two trees in the children's area.
What are those two trees?
They are, those, those are valley oaks.
Okay.
And
go ahead.
Our attitude toward valley oaks has changed greatly since the drought. We started seeing many, many more major branch failures and what's called summer branch drop, which is a poorly understood phenomenon that occurs with certain species, including valley oak during the late summer. And the we've been seeing more and more and the town of San Anselmo, for example, went from saying, prove the tree is a hazard and can't be, the hazard can't be mitigated adequately with safety pruning before we let you remove a valley oak. They've gone to saying, prove your valley oak is safe. You have to go get a certified tree risk assessor to tell the, prove to the town that it's safe. Otherwise, we're going to tell you to remove it. That the failures have increased so dramatically of this species that in a forest, her, in a less actively used area, I wouldn't worry about it. But in a children's playground, it's, I look at those trees every time I walk my dogs through the park. It, it just worries me constantly.
Well, can I then ask you, remember how, you know, what was it a year ago or so where we went through all this with removing trees? And it sounds to me like those couple of trees, it's worthwhile to potentially take those to the tree committee because if you're worried about them, we don't, we don't need to have a tree fall, but at least discussing with the tree committee your concerns to see is it, is it safe to leave those trees there? We don't want kids hurt or killed. So that's my thought. And the other piece I think I would throw out there for our town manager, I know there's a concern about paying for water during a drought. And I also know that Garrett talked about working with Larry Bragman and others at the Water District on maybe watering less in other areas, but it seems to me like these trees are our most valuable resource. So I think if we have to spend more money watering to make sure that we have healthy stands and we can plant some new trees and keep those water, it's worth it. And that's why I also think to the extent, maybe we don't do as much compost as you suggested, but we really need to look at that. That is such an important piece of our town. So thank you, Ray, for, as always, but I would also urge you to talk to our town manager and Mark and Ben about potentially bringing those valley oaks to the tree committee. Let's not be in the situation we were before. Let's be proactive and bring those to the tree committee and really discuss them with them. So thank you very much, Ray. Always a pleasure.
Thank you. I have to say, I do not see an imminent threat of failure on those trees. But it does continuously concern me because of what we've been experiencing throughout the county.
Can I just ask the location of those two trees? Is one of them on the opposite side of the, of the creek from the park that leans toward the park?
No, they're both rooted within the children's playground area. They're actually more toward Park Road.
Okay. Do you know what tree I'm talking about that was leaning in the direction across the creek but toward the park?
Yep, that was that big medrone.
Oh, I don't remember it being a medrone, but you're the
It was dead?
Yeah, it was like petrified. It was like black.
Yeah, that was that was the medrone. And I believe it was the medrone. It was just recently removed.
Okay. Sorry to, sorry to interrupt. Thank you.
And, and we got a nice thick mulch layer over a considerable area from that.
Nice.
Great. Thank you, Ray.
Um, yeah, I'll be brief, Ray. Thank you so much. That was absolutely crystal clear report and I learned, I learned a ton. I, I did want to ask you to clarify something around pages three, four, and five, where you look at the starting with plant biology and you talk about crowding. So I'm a little confused. So when, if you're talking about first growth, is that not, does that not pose as much of a, of a, of a threat of crowding as the second growth? Because it sounds like many of these places, you're saying the trees are stunted, insufficient growing space and soil resources for the number of trees. So in, in planting more and replacing the ones we take down, do they go? Where do they go so that we avoid the crowding?
Well, many of the trees are just a matter of two or three feet apart. So if you have five or six trees within an area that is, say, ten to fifteen feet in diameter, that's too many stems per unit area. There's too many redwood stems relying on the available soil nutrients and water and growing space, which by growing space, I mean the space to display their foliage so they can produce photosynthates. If you have too many trees crowding each other, none of them can be healthy. It's just like if all of us had to share breakfast for one person this morning and lunch for one person this lunchtime and the same at dinner, we'd be grumbling now. In a week, we'd start hurting. In a month, we'd be getting sick. So it's the same with plants. If you have too many trees per unit soil volume, none of them can be healthy. So that's, that's a consequence of second growth. Because as you, as you'll notice in the grove, there's all these sprouts at the base of the existing trees. And there were sprouts at the bases of the mother trees before they were logged. And those sprouts to which were attached to the mother stump took over as the new trees. Actually, each of those fairy rings or those clumps of daughter stems, they're actually technically one tree, one multi-stemmed tree. But there are simply too many stems and too many crowded canopies per unit area for them to really exhibit great growth.
So just a, just a quick connect those dots. So we're planting more trees and I'm all for it, but where, where do they go so that we're not encroaching further upon?
There's, there's plenty of space
Okay.
that is just open where they can be a good fifteen feet from any tree, other tree.
Great.
So there's definite room. And if you've ever walked through a native redwood first growth redwood forest, you'll notice that there's space between the trees. They aren't crowded like they are in this stand.
Great. Thank you, Ray.
Do I call on Chance?
Well, thanks. I'll hop in here then. Thank you so much, Ray, for your report. I thought it was fantastic as well. And coming from the volunteer board, it was really great to see you talk about replacement because I learned a lot from you when we did plant some trees downtown last year. So it was great to see it. I think it'd be a good opportunity for, for volunteers to get involved again in that type of thing. A couple of questions. The first, with regard to chipping of trees that may have heart rot or suffer from brown cubicle rot. I was wondering, are there any issues with chips from diseased trees being reapplied around the bases of, of other second growth trees? Are there any concerns about that?
You don't want to pile chips up against the base. And incidentally, I've observed in Doc Edgar that the staff that does the mowing has a habit of piling the grass cuttings up against the base of the trees. Trees with thin bark that is subject to decay, that's a very bad idea. It would be the same with mulch. You don't want to put, but redwoods are a truly unique tree. Their bark is incredibly decay resistant. It is full of tannic acid. And there, I, it would not be a problem if there's mulch close to the base of the, of the older trees. The young trees, you don't want it right against the base. So if you plant fifty gallon trees, you don't want mulch right against the base.
Got it. Thank you. And just a further question about that. In the climate, carbon sequestration, climate action community, there's a lot of discussion about biochar. And we're starting to see more products come online regarding biochar. And, and I was just curious, we talk about, you know, clean chips. I was wondering, what's your take professionally on chips versus char additives to these trees to, to further that sequestration and water retention and percolation?
Charcoal is great. Super activated charcoal is even better, but plain old charcoal incorporated in the soil is an excellent soil additive. As a matter of fact, you know, gardening stores sell all kinds of soil supplements. But really, the only one that really works well is char. And one of the great things about char is it absorbs and holds nutrients in it. And it also absorbs and holds water in it and it doesn't break down. So it's good for eons. So char is great. Unfortunately, biochar in the United States and Mexico and Central America is quite another story. But in the United States, it's not cheap. But charcoal from a fireplace is great. It's a great additive.
And would, would you recommend adding anything like that? You're talking about mineral supplements and things like that. Would that be a recommendation or?
If it's available, it's, it's certainly a good additive.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then you mentioned that the first two cycles would be six hour watering. Once, you know, mulch or compost is applied. And I know staff is concerned about excess water usage during the drought. But I was curious, what, what is the length or the duration of those cycles? And over time, you know, how frequently would we have to water these trees and for how long? Just to get a sense of overall water usage over the next year, say?
Trees like deep infrequent watering, native trees. And so even when we're recommending to people in their landscape around their home, we say you want to irrigate your trees about every three weeks to four weeks. And you want it so that the soil is moist down through that area where ninety percent of the absorbing roots are, which is depending on species, twelve to eighteen inches. which is depending on species, twelve to eighteen inches. And the reason we have to water more the first time and presumably after we have the mulch, after we have the aeration and decompression of the soil. The soil is not going to accept the water very quickly. And and remind me, I want to bring up something else about irrigation before we leave where the town could save some money. So the first time we do it, it's going to take a long time to get that water into the soil. Then in subsequent irrigations and subsequent years, it should take less and less time and less and less water because the soil is that much more receptive to bringing the water in. And it's much more improved to hold the water once it goes in there.
Great, thanks.
Savings. I walk my dogs in Doc Egger Park regularly. And after they irrigate that place, it's like mush. I'm walking along and it's going squish, squish, squish. They are way over irrigating Doc Egger. Way too much water. So they could probably save half the water they're applying to Doc Egger.
And I just had one more question for you, Ray. The, is it possible, I know you mentioned this is a draft and that there might be a subsequent version. Is it possible in the next version to get a sense of where compost applications are needed most based on soil chemistry or tree health? And then same goes for maybe aeration in terms of frequency of aeration. I just don't know if it's like a one-time thing or if there's an ongoing aeration plan, given that this is a frequented, high-traffic park with lots of soil compaction.
Yeah, the aeration is a one-time event. Once we get some organic matter moved into that crust and as the organic matter starts decomposing above the organic acids start moving through the soil. And those organic acids help the soil develop what we call structure, greater porosity. And so it's a it's a one-time event for the aeration.
Right, thank you. Yeah, so it, if I can ask, it sounds like from what you've described that even putting some compost down, a thin layer of compost and then mulch above that, like tree chips, would be beneficial because the, one of the purposes of the mulch is to bring those bacteria in and, and get that process going more quickly. Is that correct?
That's right. The, the compost would bring in that vast array of bacteria to break down the organic matter in the, in the mulch. And so over years, you would you would continuously, I talk with my hands a lot. You would continuously add more com, more mulch. And the bottom layer would be becoming compost and then organic acids and then moving down into the soil.
Yeah. Stephanie?
Thank you so much, Ray. I, one of the things I loved about this role is how much I learn about so many different topics. So thank you for this report and for your time this evening. And a lot of my questions have already been asked and answered, so I'll, I'll try to make it quick. I'm looking at, I guess, page twelve. And so you've already answered the question about aeration. Okay, so that's a one-time event. So that's helpful to understand. And I would presume that the whole area would need to be fenced off and do, from the public, and do you know for how long that would be?
Oh, to do the aeration?
Yeah.
No, you can do the aeration and then, and the mulch will hold it open. So you shouldn't have to fence it off at all.
For any of this?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, they might not want to be out there when it's being irrigated.
Touche. Okay, so the, I'm just getting, trying to get an understanding of what is annual? Or is the compost and the fertilization, are those annual maintenance, if you will?
Our soils generally in this area are poor in soil nutrients. Once you fertilize, our soils are very good at holding the fertility. And that's because we have so damn much clay. And clay myself hold the, the fertility inside the soil. So while sometimes we get frustrated with our clay, it's pretty darn good at holding water and, and and fertility.
Okay. So then, then it becomes the compost and obviously the irrigation being the ongoing maintenance costs, if you will.
Yes, but hopefully the irrigation, well, definitely the irrigation will be able to be reduced over time because the soil would be improved over time.
Right. Okay. And I noticed there was no cost in this plan. Do you have a guesstimate of what this initial plan would be?
I do not. I would have to get some people who do that kind of work to give me some prices. It, I hadn't finalized the report, so I didn't know if there are going to be changes or whatever. And so I didn't get prices except I thought, gee, I better look at, see what purchasing compost from West Marine Compost Center costs.
Right.
And it blew me away because I calculated the amount of area in the park and then calculated a one-inch layer of mulch. It came out to eighteen thousand dollars worth of, of not mulch, I mean compost. Which is a lot of it's it's a lot of compost.
Thank you so much again.
Yeah, the if, if I can just suggest that with compost, one of the things I believe I've learned, I'll check with you on this, is that when, if, if a thin layer of compost were to be put down and then the idea was to put mulch on top of it, we would want to put the mulch on top of it pretty quickly after putting the compost down so that the compost doesn't dry out and get baked by the sun because then that sort of defeats the purpose, correct?
Right, right.
That's a big important thing to remember.
Also, the rain would run it off.
Renee?
Just super quick and, and forgive me if I didn't hear the response to Chance's question. But in terms of the, the concept of not taking anything away from the forest, did you address the, the issue of the diseased wood and the chips coming from the heart rot that is in?
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay.
That's not the way heart rot enters a tree. It enters through major wounds like fire scars. And second growth trees, it enters from the mother stump, which probably contracted it years earlier from, you've seen those sort of inverted U-shaped cat faces in redwood trees. Sometimes you can walk right inside. Those are for old fire scars. And if you go inside, the hardwood will have that Poria sequoia brown cubicle rot.
Okay, thank you.
Just one question, Ray. Did I, was it fifteen gallon redwood trees to plant or was it fifty gallon?
Fifteen.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
And I, I know people also like to promote local businesses, but if the town orders wholesale, they should be able to get them for sixty dollars a can. They generally tend retail to be about three times that cost.
Well, that seems like a better approach because we're going to spending money on quite a bit, including the watering. Thank you so much, Ray.
Okay.
Thank you. I learned so much every time I hear you, Ray, so thank you very, very much.
I'm glad you like it. I, obviously, I love forestry. I'm biased toward it. Well, thank you very much.
Okay. So we'll need to make sure that this information gets to gets to the point of action and
Mayor, I see a hand raised in the public.
Yes, yeah, we're, we're going to have to go to public comment here. Unless anybody has any more comments before we do that. Okay. So Michelle, can we open public comment?
Yes, Mayor. So there is one hand raised at the moment, and that is Jay Deschler. So I want you to do, Jay.
Hello, hello?
Hello.
Yes, open to each. How are you in Coast Miwok in my language? My name is Jason Deschler. I am from the Coast Miwok Tribal Council of Marin. And I'm very, very impressed with the man who's been speaking from their Urban Forestry Associates. I think your name is Ray. It's been just a dream of mine to see somebody so interested in the redwood trees. You know, one of the things that I really despise of in Marin County is the what do you call the eucalyptus trees that just destroy our forests? And it's really neat to hear you talking about the trees. And not to be in disagreement with you in any way at all, but just to add to what you have been saying, one thing I haven't heard about how to take care of these redwood trees. And because I'm saying this because I heard of water and too much water being an issue, which I don't see too much water ever being an issue for a redwood tree. The problem here is it's not just the trees. The trees need the undergrowth. The trees need the brush to the plants, to the ferns, to the mosses, to all that. There should be a good soaking of eighteen to twenty-four inches in the soil of these redwood trees. A full-grown redwood tree drinks anywhere from a hundred and fifty gallons to five hundred gallons per day. The old-growth redwood trees that are three to four hundred feet tall, they create their own ecosystems up in the top layer where only certain plants and things grow, only in the redwood canopy. These full-grown redwood trees drink fifteen hundred gallons of water per day just through fog. So water should never be the issue of the redwood trees. There needs to be a certain layer of tree all the way down to the mosses. And the duff is the number one issue. And fire was a big part of why these redwood trees were so big in the first place. And the charcoal is a big important part of this, but it's also where do you place the charcoal? You don't place the charcoal on top of the duff because in a natural scenery, when a fire comes through, it would have burned up all that duff and all the brush. The charcoal would be left on top of the crusty layer and then the duff would start to fall and then the plants would start to grow and then the brush and so on would start to grow. And the crowding of the redwood trees is what made them stretch so tall to the sun. You know, some of these old studies, you know, of what you guys or what we're just starting to discover are fairy rings, some of these fairy rings are just recently discovered and were never known to be fairy rings in the first place. We are just now discovering that these are fairy rings. So the rotting of the old mother tree stump, I think, needs to be researched a little more. And once again, I, I, I talk about fire because fire plays a huge role in the preservation of these tree stumps. It, 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 it kills the bacteria. It also puts the nutrients and holds, holds that nutrients back into the tree stump. It preserves. When you leave the tree stump exposed, it starts becoming exposed to the moisture and the rot and the bugs and so on and so forth. But if these tree stumps were burned and taken care of, I think there might be a different result in this. So I just wanted to add to Ray and thank you, Ray, for everything that you've spoken on these redwood trees and my prayer is that these things will, that our, our, our great-grandmothers will rise again to the size that they were. And we'll see not just the trees, but the animals and everything that were in the trees and in our forests. And, 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 and most of all, that the Miwok people will return to be there to take care of these trees as we once did. For who knows the forest better than my ancestors? So thank you for this opportunity to speak in the public.
I agree with you completely. When I came to California, when my wife was offered positions at several universities here, I said, go there because I was in graduate school, working with fire as a tool, reintroducing fire to ecosystems that require fire. And believe it or not, that was in northern Minnesota. And so I came to California thinking California is going to be way forward looking about using fire. And I got here and nothing was happening. I was totally shocked. And I have said many times in, in talks I've given about fire ecology that the Native Americans was my, were much smarter than we are. And we have not, we've learned only to fear fire and not to use it as a tool. And the Native Americans used it very effectively as a tool. Oh, well, that's enough. On that.
Michelle?
Thank you. The next speaker is Frank Egger, followed by Deborah Benson. Frank, you're unmuted.
Unmuted, great. Thank you very much. Good evening, council members. The, the redwoods in Perry Park are under major heat and drought stress. And it's been that way for a while. The last two major floods we had in the park was nineteen eighty-two and then two thousand and five. Both of those floods brought in a lot of silt. And, and those redwood groves are really irrigated well, twice. But since then, very little. The, the redwood trees that were marked for removal, there was one large redwood at the corner of Belinas and Elsie in that grove down there. And then someone tore the ribbon off, so we don't know what's happening with that one large redwood there. And then there were three redwoods between the sidewalk and Perry Park on Park Road. One had a wire fence attached to it at one time. So, and we were concerned about, about bringing those three redwoods back rather than just cutting them down and, and moving on. We actually, the townsfolk actually contributed to hiring an arborist to walk the parks, parks with us. And one of the, one of the questions that he had, you know, the, the undergrowth, the new shoots and the small trees that were cut, cut in, in the Perry Park area, they had a lot of dead foliage that was not cut. When we went to pull it, it wasn't cut. It was just dead foliage. And he, he asked if Roundup had been used on the new shoots, but we didn't know. We were going to send, we were going to staff off a couple of pieces of the dead shoots and send them out to have them tested, but it's kind of expensive. You know, we had raised about fifteen hundred bucks for the arbor, arborist report or arborist to walk through with us. So, so we did not test those shoots to see if Roundup had been used on them. Well, another arborist had made a recommendation of, of enhancing the soils with crushed oyster shells. And, and he said they were, it's available in And, and he said they were, it's available in Petaluma, plus the irrigation. What we see in state parks is, is small redwood groves are, are fenced off. There's actually little, little, little rail fencing around the redwood groves and, and it's, they put, they put those little fences around redwood groves to stop compaction. And, and perhaps we need to be fencing off some of our little redwoods to bring them back, the ones that are in, in, in huge stress situations. And if we could fence them off and stop the compaction around them, that would be helpful. In, in Doc Edgar Park, there's one giant sequoia and, and, and the arborist did take a look at it. It, it's got a lot of dead, uh, dead foliage in it. And, and it needs to be irrigated. I know Ray said that the park itself, the lawn area is, is irrigated. Maybe sometimes over irrigated. But perhaps we can, we can somehow get that irrigation into that, into that giant sequoia because it needs some help. Otherwise, you're gonna lose it. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank.
The giant sequoia suffers from a disease called Batryospheria. And it results in almost every giant sequoia that's brought down out of the Sierra where its native home is. So the heat and the lack of winter, I, I mean, a snowy winter that freezes makes these giant sequoias down in the lowlands much more susceptible to Batryospheria. And, and that's what it's suffering from. That, then, that's my observation of that tree. It's just not in its home.
Next speaker is Deborah Benson. You're unmuted.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Rand. That was a great report. I was frozen out of your reporting twice by technology or lack thereof. So I'm not sure if you mentioned this, but to my recollection from you having given a similar report last fall, the first step would have been to, to rough up the soil, scar, scar, scarify? Is that what you call it? Scarify?
Well, the soils are scarified and we would aerate the soil.
Aerate the soil. So is that the first step?
Yeah, it would be a good idea to have at least some mulch down when you do it so that the mulch moves into the cracks that are created by the aeration process. And that holds that crust open so that water can enter and air can enter. Trees need, uh, roots need oxygen. Top of the tree needs carbon dioxide. Roots need oxygen. You want aeration as well as water percolation.
All right. So is there a timeline and is this being managed by anyone in particular? Is, you know, is this really set to happen? Do we have, do we have first step to be set in motion?
I've been working with Garrett Ben Berto and Mark. And I imagine, you know, they will give information that they get from me to staff to start affecting the plan.
Okay, well, that is a great, a great.
And there's, there's a lot of work that could be done by volunteers. Right now, Frank was talking about all those dead sprouts at the base of the trees. If a fire were to blow through this area and the ember blizzard entered that stand, it would ignite those dead twigs at the base of the tree, those dead sprouts. And because our trees are relatively sickly, they don't have that thick a bark that it could kill the stand. So one thing I would like to do is get together with a bunch of volunteers and we go in there and we would snip the dead ones and leave the green ones. And then the green ones would grow. And it would do away with those fine ignition fuels at the bases of the trees.
And how would someone go about becoming a volunteer? Would that go through the volunteer committee, council members? Or would that be something that would be sent out in some sort of a newsletter if he'd like to volunteer to help redwoods?
I would suggest that we, that we talk about that after we finish with the public comment. We definitely should figure out what's the next step and how this is gonna go on because we've got great information here.
Well, thank you very much, Ray, for your reporting. And thank you all for hearing.
So the next speaker is Veronica Garretts, and you're unmuted now.
Thanks, Michelle. Ray, thank you so much. I feel like we just got gifted with Forestry 101, listening to, to the wisdom that you shared and really appreciate the time and passion and commitment that you have. I feel like what a blessing we have you as the resource. So thank you. And I also just want to say thanks to Jason for calling in and sharing what you did and lifting, lifting up the perspective that you have. What, that was a sweet moment to be able to hear. I hope that we can continue to bridge that relationship between the way that as a town we're leaning into forest management and indigenous forest management as well. And lastly, to name that volunteer piece, as a member of the volunteer board, I'll certainly take this back as an opportunity for us. We, we unfortunately aren't able to be doing so much this year because of, again, leaning into restrictions in terms of gathering due to the pandemic. And so we, at our last meeting, we're just like, what are we gonna do? How can we foster community cheer? And so I, I think that would be a great collaboration opportunity for the volunteer board to jump in and definitely bring it up and see if we can.
How about, how about save, how about save the redwoods? Only one person per tree.
Yes, exactly. Socially distanced. Okay, great. Thanks a lot, Ray.
Thanks, Veronica.
Okay, and the last speaker is Beth Vertical. You are unmuted now. Oh, actually, there's someone after you too.
Okay, hello, everyone. How are you? Thank you so much for taking this time for the redwoods. As you know, my voice cracked when I called in about them last time. I love them so much. So anyway, I'm wondering, I just have a couple of things. I guess, um, I wanna know about next steps, of course. But also I'm wondering about volunteering on a broader level. I guess bottom line is I don't want money to get in the way of anything that needs to be done to help our redwoods. And I'm signing up for helping out in whatever way I can. I know we have money. Everybody always bitches about how much money we're spending on whatever and whatever, but I just wanna get beyond that and whatever is short with town funds, I'd like to do a GoFundMe or some kind of fundraising thing. I just don't want money to be the issue on this one because it's just too important right now. And then also about volunteering, I guess I'll get in touch with Ray and I guess you guys will post something. But I'm also very moved by Jason and the fact that he had to call in as a member of the public when we read a statement at the beginning of our meetings, why aren't we already working with the Miwok, with the redwoods? Like, I just don't understand why that's not a given. If we're gonna be reading that preamble for every meeting, why that relationship isn't here? And I don't know the history, so you know, beyond what happens to the Miwok when white people came, but you know, I don't know what's going on like currently with our town council and the Miwok, but I mean, if this guy can call in and know these ancestors of ours, the trees so well, and then Ray is a white guy is saying, yeah, yeah, I love fire. It just seems backwards, you know? So I'm also wondering about possibly using fire. I think that white people need to start, and I'm white, but I've done a lot of ceremonial work and I just appreciate the heritage of the Native Americans so much. And I just don't know why we're not looking to teach people about fire and controlling it and getting rid of the disease and what Ray has to say about that. Because I know he loves biochar and I do too, but I'm just wondering, what do you think about a controlled burn and getting rid of the disease on the mother of the oaks, I mean, of the redwoods where we have the fairy rings? So that's my one question I'm leaving with and then just the other comments.
Thank you, Beth.
Yeah, as I was saying, right now, you could not really even have a ground fire in that stand because there's simply not enough fuel. And also the fact that the trees are so sickly, they haven't developed a thick bark layer. The thick bark of red, of redwood is very insulating and protects the tree very well from fire typically. But in this stand, the trees are very thin barked, relatively speaking. And so I would worry about using fire. I did a prescribed burn years ago in central San Rafael in Eucalyptus Forest. I got the San Rafael Fire Chief to support it. And we had one complaint, just one complaint about it. And that was that maybe we're teaching children to light fires. But it was very effective and it went off without a hitch. But I don't think this stand is recovered enough. Maybe in the future, fire could be reintroduced on a very limited basis. But that's something down the road a ways in the stand's recovery.
Okay, Michelle, do we have any more public comment?
No, we do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so let's bring it back to council and.
Actually, a hand went up as I said that. There's one last comment.
Let's do that.
That's Mark Bell. You're unmuted.
Thanks, Michelle. So I'm glad that this issue has come to the forefront and I'm looking forward to hear what your a, a, action plan will be and a timeline on it. As far as what's happening with the soil, my question to Ray would be, do these redwood trees need water immediately? Like, how drastic is the situation? What type of timeline would you give as far as leeway on enacting a plan? So I didn't have a chance to read your report.
I would like to get things going this spring. Right now, they do have some groundwater recharge, but fairly limited. But I'd like to see things get going this spring before the summer heat settles in.
So would you say there is like a one month or a two month window or the sooner the better?
Well, there's probably through, through May, we have a window through May to really hopefully get something happening this year. But we'll have to get some costs on things.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. So are we, Michelle, we have any more hands?
Um, we only have a person who has already spoken and I believe it's the council's policy for people to speak once. And then, oh, Jane Richardson Mack's hand keeps popping up and disappearing. I'm not sure if she's.
Okay, well, we, we don't have any more hands up now for anybody who hasn't spoken. Let's bring it back to council because the, we have, we have more to cover on the agenda. And we, the thing that we have heard several times, and it's definitely my question, is what do we do next? What's our, what's our action plan? We've got a lot of great information here. Garrett, do you have any suggestion as to, I think we might wanna bring the tree committee this information, get, get them to look at it quickly, but how quickly can?
I don't think you need the, I, I think it was pretty clear in the staff report. We said we just worked with Ray and implement the plan. The only tweak to it would be it sounds like volunteers want to participate, so we have to roll out ability to volunteers and figure out when they can do what they're gonna do versus what we're gonna do and we're just gonna roll roll forward with the plan, just working directly with Ray. I, I don't know how complicated that really is or, I mean, assuming the council wants to do that, thought it was pretty straightforward. Committee was just related to the valley oaks and other things. That's kind of.
Cost estimates? Are you gonna need council approval on the costs?
No, I, I think the caveat would be if the costs come back to be some crazy number, then I would go to the council, but I would think under any of the scenarios, you know, it'd be absorbed within our budget. You, you would know as we work through the budget workshop in the mid-year, if we're that quick. The only unknown to me is, is water and maybe it's not that big of a deal. But the unknown is if they impose drought restrictions and they want you to cut back in usage, then we'd be doing the opposite, even if we cut back in irrigation in other parts. But we won't really know until we get closer. So I think what I'd recommend the council, we're gonna move forward. If we hit any glitches where we need council direction, we'll just go back to the council for direction. And we'll try to incorporate the volunteers into all the different ac- activities where it's aeration or cutting the dead. I don't even know what to call that. Or doing anything else that volunteers could do. Otherwise, we already know if we cut trees, we need to spread the chip. We already know, we're talking to contractors about trying to get clean chips. Clean chips can be difficult because oftentimes we don't even know what's in that load that they're bringing in. And we've done that before for certain areas in town. But Ray's gonna give us some specs, so we give that to the contractors and then they'll know and off, off we go. We understand it's priority. So we're just moving forward. Again, we'll come back to council. If we believe we need council direction on anything or something is just prohibitively expensive and we need a budget adjustment, then that'd be up to the council to decide.
Okay, does this sound workable to you, Ray, and to other council members that we?
Yeah, there are certain things that volunteers can do. And I think we could make it attractive to volunteers by calling it Saves the Redwoods. And the, such as getting rid of the basil sprouts that are dead. And soil aeration can be done by hand. I have a couple soil aerators myself. And spreading chips that the tree companies hopefully will dump within the grove. And there might be, you know, if you get a lot of chips, you might wanna hire someone with a skip loader to spread them around. It's like one of those little bobcats to spread around the chip. So that would be a cost, but it'd be pretty manageable.
Can I just suggest, I guess Jane Richardson Mack is having some technical issues. She sent me a note that the tree committee could be involved in volunteers, getting volunteers. So maybe the tree committee could work with the volunteers on trying to gin up volunteers for, for what, what that piece is. So thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, so it sounds like we've got direction here to, for one thing, reach out to the tree committee and to the volunteers with this opportunity to work with Ray and with staff to implement these directions. And Ray's got a very clear idea of the priorities and the directions to go. And we should get on to it. Chance?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just had a quick question for Ray, which is, it sounds like, you know, getting the mulch priced out, getting the stands or trenches for stands for sprinklers and, and the water stuff. It, it, that'll take a, a minute for staff to do that. But the trimming of the sprouts, I know the public is eager to, to move on, you know, supporting these trees. And I was wondering if it makes sense, similar to the tree plantings that were done in the parcade and, and on Belinas, if the volunteer board, if they agree to, to move on this with the tree committee, if like Maria or the volunteer board just reaches out to you directly, Ray, to schedule some opportunity to go out there and cut that with, cut those sprouts within the next, you know, month or six weeks or however long.
Yeah, yeah, that would be cool. The irrigation, you want a tripod mounted impact sprinkler. There are a number of them that can do eighty-five foot diameter circles. And they cost between forty and fifty bucks. And they cost uh, between forty and fifty bucks. But you want to run, get the hoses to run to them and all that sort of stuff.
Okay.
So I'm not clear on what, like how we have a commitment to the irrigation because we don't necessarily have an irrigation plan. So, you know, three years, five years from now, like what is our commitment to the irrigation? And so I guess that's a little bit too open-ended for my comfort level right now. Um, just
Yeah.
Hearing what I heard from Garrett, I guess, in the short term, I'm comfortable with him proceeding with his, you know, expenditure, you know, limits is what I heard, but I guess I don't, you know, we're gonna get preoccupied with other things and I guess I would like some commitment that we're not gonna be here, you know, two years from now. Like we need some firm commitment that there's a, there's gonna be a maintenance plan in place. We're gonna have, you know, we're gonna have this dialed and maintenance supported annually, including irrigation. So I, I don't, I don't know that we got there tonight.
Well, can I try to phrase that question as well? Um, one idea is that I would suggest that staff talk with, um, probably talk with Larry. Be as, as Garrett, you already said that you would be talking about the question of whether we could get any kind of rate discount or something for watering these trees. One possibility that I know has been talked about in previous years uh, by, by Larry has been if we could get reclaimed water uh, run to into our town in places. So if we could do that, that's, that's something we might look at. And that would lower the cost and also lower the environmental footprint of using that water because it doesn't have to be purified water. It can be watered, as I would understand, straight out of the reservoirs. So that's one thing maybe to look at. And then, yeah, I agree with, with Vice Mayor Hellman that um, we just need to be looking at that as well while we're getting the other pieces in place to, to uh, to treat the soil, aerate the soil. We also need to be looking ahead to how we're gonna get that watering done and what's gonna be our, our plan to keep the watering.
Right. Well, we, when this first came up, we said, is that the tree committee working with staff? Like who's on point for accountability to make sure that this is happening? And so, go ahead, Garrett.
I think to clarify, maybe as staff, may remember reading this wrong. But pretty much, this is a maintenance plan that's an ongoing maintenance plan for redwood growth. That's what we're doing. So we're moving forward. And then as Ray indicated, the watering might be more intensive to start with, but the game plan is once the soil is in a certain condition, maybe you don't need to water as much. But our game plan is we start in every year. If we need to do X, Y, and Z, whatever that is, whether it's mulch or compost, it didn't sound like maybe you have to do aeration every year. But we would be working with Ray. So this becomes an annual maintenance plan that we build into our public works system. And accordingly, the budget maybe doesn't even need to be modified. I have no idea. Um, ideally, as Ray indicated, once you get the watering established, um, then soil's good, then maybe you don't have to water as much. Whether patterns change, maybe it rains more, maybe it doesn't, who knows? But we know that's, that's a priority of the council right now, so that's what we're building in. So, so stamp's responsible. So I'm not, I don't, I don't want it to make like we're just gonna do it and then we forget. That's not.
And I don't want to like say that you're going to. I just like to, you know, it's responsible thing to do is to build in accountability. So we don't forget because we are a busy body.
Right. It, it gets built into the public works maintenance plan, so it just becomes a thing because the watering and putting out the tripods will actually require a public works person to set it up and take it down while it's up for the six hours or
Right.
eight hours or whatever. So that just becomes part of what's required. Now, I cannot tell you at this point, if by doing all this, does that somehow mean something else doesn't get done somewhere else? We have no idea at this point, but I would say it's in there. We know we'll start. Again, next year, I'm sure we'll have this discussion again. We could report back if you like. But I think the first step is we're gonna implement everything, get it set up, and then we'll see.
Can I make a suggestion that I think one of the things Ray mentioned is this is a draft report. Could we get the report finalized with kind of a schedule of tree planting, aeration, um, the mulching, as well as the irrigation, at least in year one? So that we have a final document and maybe that could be on consent. But so we have a plan that we can look to. And then as part of that, that you would report every year and update if needed. And so, you know, what I, what I like about this is it's flexible. But what I don't like about it is, it would just be nice to, let's just document this, get it final in a final place. And it doesn't have to be that everything's gonna happen April one, but let's start within six weeks or whatever, and then just have what we think is gonna happen for all these events. Uh, to the extent feasible, and then let's just get it on consent and then just say every year at this time, we'll get an update on it if we need it. And then I think councils will change, things will change. We want to make sure that it is something that we feel good about. And if all of us are here next year, you know, it's just basically it's, is there any updates needed? To me, I think that would be helpful, but maybe I'm just too um, process oriented.
Well, it sounds like that's what we're talking about is how do we just write this down, get it into the maintenance plan, figure out what we have to do first. It sounds to me from what Ray has said that we've got some initial actions that Ray recommends. We all have heard them. They sound great. Sounds like absolutely the right thing to do. We should get going on them right away. And that involves finding, connecting with people who would be able to volunteer and, and getting that work done. And then the uh, and that includes getting the sprinklers and, and getting that set up. And then ongoing, it would include watering and just making sure that everything is healthy. Making sure that we don't need another layer of mulch or whatever might be needed over time, but sort of an ongoing maintenance plan. So it's sort of like two different things. One is the initial set of actions. And then the other is the ongoing set of actions so that we don't forget about it in a future year and just take the red, redwoods for granted.
That's why I think if you finalize this plan with the initial actions and then a schedule over time, uh, then we have a document that we can use every year and uh, it's exactly what you're saying with the little, let's just document it. And then we feel good about it and we can pull it out if need be. So that's what I'm proposing as next steps, but it looks like Councilmember Goddard.
I just have a quick, very quick. I wa- before we closed, I wanted to propose a name for this wonderful campaign and call it Revive the Redwoods. What do you think?
I like it.
Sounds good.
I could get behind that.
Okay, I think we have our direction. Are we, are we good with that? And, and we will hear back as to how this is going. And thank you, Ray. And thank you in advance for continuing to work with the town to, to get this implemented and make sure that we uh, remember all the steps and and show us how to do them.
Okay, and Chance and others who uh, either have input about the report finalization or want input or want to get volunteers rolling. Um, you know where to find me.
Yeah, and I'd be interested in learning how to use the aerator that you have. That sounds pretty cool. Give me a call. All right.
Very good. Good night, folks.
Thank you, Ray. Mayor, would it be all right if we took a five or ten minute break?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. It's ten o'clock already anyway. So after that, we'll, we'll talk about the uh, where we're going from here on the agenda. Thank you. Uh, ten, ten. All right. All right, we're reconvening here. And it's ten o'clock, so we can look at our agenda. Um, I would suggest that we continue. We have two more items. They're both uh, items that are gonna involve some discussion, but I think it's important that we keep going with these items. So that would be my recommendation if the council is okay with that. That's the item fourteen and fifteen.
Uh, I agree. Uh, can I just mention something? Jane Richardson Mack and John Ramadas are having some technical difficulties. And I think they want to speak on item fifteen. Would it be possible if she tells me that she wants to speak that I just say that? I think she can speak. They just can't seem to raise their hand. Is that okay?
Yeah, when, when we get to the public comment, then um, yeah, is, can she call in by phone?
I don't know. I'll ask her. Okay, I'll ask. Okay, thank you.
All right, that'll be item fifteen though. Okay.
State for the record, I'm not able to stay past midnight tonight.
Okay, all right. Okay, so um, Renee, I, I'm having technical problems too. So uh, Renee, your face is frozen here and I hope you're not raising your hand or.
No, all good.
Everybody knows, so sometimes when I've missed saying, missed you when you raise your hand, it's because my video is freezing and I don't even see you raising your hand. So it's, the internet is, is not happy tonight for me. Okay, so um, let's move on to item fourteen and begin with a staff report on that.
Sure. So item fourteen is discuss, consider the renaming of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard and provide formal direction to the council representatives to the Sir Francis Drake Ad hoc Working Group. So as some background, um, you know, Fairfax is one of five jurisdictions in participating in discussion related to the renaming of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. It goes through our five jurisdictions. That's the county, city of Larkspur, towns of Ross and San and Selmo. And each of those jurisdictions appointed two representatives to this ad hoc county working group. Our representatives are Mayor Ackerman and Councilmember Goddard. Um, you may recall back in December of two, uh, your December sixteenth meeting last year, Councilmember Goddard and Mayor Ackerman recorded that the working group agreed the members should go back to their jurisdictions, go through their own process regarding the renaming and then report back to the group for its first meeting in April. And they also reiterated that the whole concept is whether you want to pursue a name change, not what that name change should be. So the council, you had a listening session February sixth from ten to twelve. Uh, the town website does have a local resource page related to Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And that was uh, put together in collaboration with council members Cuttrono and Councilmember Goddard. And so really, to meet the April deadline for the ad hoc working group, council should provide direction to its two council reps to the ad hoc working group. So the options available to the council are, you could support the renaming of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, that'd be one. Two, you could support the renaming of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard or something of that similar action or nature. Three, do not support the renaming of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Or four, don't take a decision, position on the matter and really wait to see where the other jurisdictions come out on it before making a decision. So as you probably know, the town of Ross afforded four to one to not change the name Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Larkspur voted four to one to keep the name Sir Francis Drake and adopt a co-name depending on what the consensus was for the other jurisdictions. And if that didn't actually happen, then they might explore historical designation or some type of other ceremonial name. Town of San and Selmo hasn't taken any action yet. Next week, I think it's on their agenda. County Marin has yet to decide. So again, to keep in mind, each entity controls has jurisdiction over its portion of Sir Francis Drake. It's about two miles within the town of Fairfax. So possibility exists, if everybody does something differently, and Sir Francis Drake could have different names, co-names, different designations and so on, but just keep that in mind. Catch the staff report. We gave you information we gave you before regarding the research items related to potential renaming. And we also put together, well, some included information that Michael Ardito had prepared related to Fairfax addresses along Sir Francis Drake, which we didn't fair vibe, but we think it's relatively accurate. And I think he may have sent an email correcting the number of businesses. So with that, that's pretty much concludes the staff report. Uh, really, it's, the action really is uh, providing direction to your two council representatives, which is Mayor Ackerman, Councilmember Goddard. So they could report back to the Sir Francis Drake Ad hoc Working Group with Fairfax's direction and how to proceed.
Thank you. So if there are any questions uh, for regarding the staff report before we go to public comment, we can ask them now. And uh, I'm wondering, and I'm not, right now I can't see anybody moving, so I don't know if anybody is raised in there. So I'm sorry.
Just me.
Barbara and Stephanie are both raising their hands.
Just, um, I just want to mention that Jane Richardson Mack, they do want to speak on this item as well. So when we get to that, hopefully that'll work. All right, thank you.
Okay. Stephanie, you.
Yeah, I know um, the staff report mentioned San and Selmo uh, votes next week, I believe on the ninth. When does the county vote? When do the supervisors vote?
My understanding is the supervisors are gonna vote fairly soon on it, but they, I actually would want to mention actually as kind of a, a part of what uh, what Garrett was saying in the staff report. From what I understand, the, they haven't voted yet, but that there was recently uh, uh, there, there have been more than one listening session, but in a recent listening session, there seemed to be an idea that there were a number of people who were starting to, to bring up, which was as Garrett mentioned, the co-naming or something like it, that the idea seemed to be a historical designation that would be prominently displayed along with it. So that's sort of an idea that seems to be, um, seems to be coming out from what I hear on the county level. But they haven't voted on it. They haven't discussed it formally yet.
Well, that's representative, one of the options in our staff report.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Have any questions, comments before we go to the public? And just say so if you do, because I can't see you very much.
If I may offer just one point of clarification is um, i- in our, in our list of options, um, staff does give us the second option of supporting the co-naming, but there isn't anything formally written in the staff report about the idea of a historical designation. That's come as Bruce, uh, as the mayor said, in um, actually the last several listening sessions that the county conducted.
I see.
So that's not on there, but um, someone from the public did send us something that showed us uh, a depiction of what one of those sort of designation signs might look like.
I saw that. I saw that email, but thank you for making the distinction. I didn't realize that was different than the co-naming.
And that was new. That came up new um, in the last several weeks, if I'm correct. And I'm sure Michael Ardito will cur- will, will clarify.
So.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll hear about that. Yeah.
So just to clarify, for option two, that's why I just added the or other similar type of action, which is there's the historical designation ceremonial type approach. But again, really, it's just, you just, the, the goal would be, the preference is to provide some level of direction to your council representatives.
Right.
Can I just say, just, and I don't want to stop this, but I thought the email that talked about the historical designation also included the idea of a co-name, but I could be wrong. I think it had both elements in there, but I'm sure Michael Ardito will straighten us out.
Well, and we'll have a chance to discuss this after public comment. So right now I'm done trying to get us to the public comment point. Any other clarifications or, I, I think that was useful to sort of clarify that there's this other option that's, that's coming onto the table in, in at least one other jurisdiction, the counties. And so it's, it's worth the, the public knowing about that before we talk. And I think we'll hear about that as soon as we get to public comment. So we're ready to do that? Okay, Michelle, can you open the public comment, please?
Yes, Mayor. We have three hands raised. First is Michael Ardito. Next is Dwayne Van Deemon, followed by Donette City. So, Michael, you are unmuted.
Good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So first I want to thank the town manager and town clerk for including the list of businesses and the estimated add, home addresses in Fairfax that would be impacted if the name was changed. I did send an email earlier today correcting the number of businesses downward from 55 to 53 because I made a mistake on 1608 A and 1608 B Sir Francis Drake. On the north side of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, it's still San and Selmo between Willow and Southfield and Kent Avenue. So when I first, my estimate, I had included them in Fairfax, but they belonged in San and Selmo. So I apologize for that error. But anyway, so for all of the jurisdictions along the boulevard, there are probably hundreds of businesses and probably over a thousand residents. I don't know what the accurate number would be, but a number of people would be impacted with quite an economic burden as well as hassles to make all those changes. Anyway, so to concur with what was said earlier, there supervisor Katie Rice held a listening session on Saturday morning primarily targeting the Kentfield and Green Bray areas that are unincorporated. And during that Zoom session, there was a lot of talk and great compromise and consensus that the name of the boulevard should stay, but there could be a co-name and that that's when the idea of the, of the brown historic preservation signs along the way to acknowledge the road is such as Coast Miwok Trail. So that's what that came with. And I'm glad that Dwayne Van Deemon is in the queue and so he can give you more information about the, his sfdrakefoundation.org where that, it shows the image of the brown historic preservation sign that people can go and, and look at. So that's all I have for now, unless you have any additional questions for me.
Oh, thank you for your, for your research on the, the number of, the number of, of homes and businesses along there and, and for your ongoing involvement with this. Thank you, Michael.
Michelle? Yes, the next speaker is Dwayne Van Deemon, followed by Donette City, followed by Veronica Garretts. So, Dwayne, you're unmuted now.
Dwayne, are you there?
Not hearing you yet. Dwayne, I don't know. It looks like you're unmuted, but we're not hearing anything.
Shall we move on to the next speaker and come back to Dwayne?
We'll come back to Dwayne. So Dwayne, if you can hear us, we'll come back to you in a, in a couple of minutes and see whether we can get it resolved.
Okay, the next speaker is Donette City. You are unmuted now.
Hi, thank you very much. I'll, I'll go in and fill in for Dwayne in case he isn't, isn't able to come back. He was having technical problems earlier as well. The idea was to, what, what occurred during that meeting, that Saturday meeting, and it really was a wonderful moment. I had discussed this idea with Dwayne because I, I was thinking about my mother and how much she loved Marin County and its history and how I think this division would have made her feel really sad. She was devoted to Marin and unfortunately had to move out and always wanted to move back, but was never able to. So I thought that one way we might heal this division is to apply to the state to designate Sir Francis Drake Boulevard as a historical site. And that way the county could put historical site, those brown historical site signs along the boulevard. And Dwayne really ran with it and made it come alive by creating a graphic image, which he then presented during the Saturday community session. It really went over well and people really supported the idea. And I was so grateful and want to acknowledge Mr. Sanchez, who was there as a representative of the Miwok people who had a really positive response to this idea and said that it was an idea he could support. I think truthfully, it is a much more meaningful way of acknowledging the Miwok people if we refer to it as a historical site and reference it as Miwok Trail, Coast Miwok Trail, whatever the Miwok prefer. I think that would be up to them to decide. And I think bringing them into the application process is also another way of bringing community together, working with the Miwok people to acknowledge their historic importance in Marin and in particular, that particular roadway. So I just wanted you to know, it was really, it was really a moving moment even for me. And I want to attribute the idea to my mother and her love of Marin. And that's pretty much what I have to say on it. His, the, if you need to see the graphic, anyone listening wants to see it, they can see it at sfdrakefoundation.org. Dwayne was kind enough to upload it to his site. So folks can see what it would actually look like. So my hope is you'll give this, this, this some thought, some consideration, maybe reach out to some of the people in the Miwok and see how their responses, their overall responses to this idea. I really hope we can bring the community, community together around it. I think it's just, it's been so, so hard to watch it be so divisive. So anyway, I wanted to just give you that little blurb, fill it in. And I want to thank you again for your time and appreciate you allowing me to speak with all of you.
Thank you, Donette.
Okay, the next speaker is Veronica Garretts. And after Veronica, I will try unmuting Jane Richardson Mack again. She's, her hair and hands not going up, but she has emailed me that she's trying to raise it.
And then we'll try to get back to Dwayne Van Deemon again as well. Yeah.
Thank you. Veronica, you're on.
Thank you. Thanks, Donette, for guiding me to the sfdrakefoundation.org to be able to see those historic route signs. That looks really beautiful. Folks are listening and haven't. And I just wanted to back that I'm really grateful that the dialogue is, is folding in and putting front the desire of Joe Sanchez, Jason Dressler, other members of the Coast Miwok Tribal Council to be really able to help guide what happens here. And that I give my full support as a Fairfax resident behind letting them continue to inform. And I know that, Renee, that you've been conscious to fold them in for how you're viewing it and just want to commend that and continue to support that and feel like if they feel comfortable with this historic route signage and that's what is meaningful and honoring for them, then that is enough for me. And also just second from that, want to encourage us as a town to recognize ways in which we can be models for the, a model for the rest of Marin. I know on the Racial Equity and Social Justice Committee, that's something that continues to be echoed is this sense of being brave to take, to go against the grain if it feels like it is especially lifting up the intentions of Black Indigenous and people of color. And so even though other jurisdictions might not be as stoked or on board with the renaming or the historic route, I don't know necessarily what the full, it sounds like during the session last Saturday, there was some good traction with it. But would just encourage us to really vision what, what we can do as a town to lead the way throughout Marin in terms of these issues that involve something that can help repair the relationship that we have with Coast Miwok folks. So thank you for continuing to hold this conversation and be sensitive about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I am calling on Shane Richardson Mack. I, I have unmuted you. You're on.
Am I in?
We can hear you.
Hallelujah. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for being such a pain here. Thank you all for, for being willing to listen to everybody about the renaming of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. I think the discussion has opened up to include everybody. And I think the solutions that have been proffered are, i.e. having another signage calling out the Miwok Trail is a great way to include everybody. It's not divisive. It's not pitting one side against another. It's a true, a true way of, of healing and incorporating everybody's wishes and desires and not, oh, I don't know, creating more animosity from one side to the other. I think Fairfax could lead the way in helping other communities, like aligning ourselves with Ross, communities that have decided to take what I consider a more sane and rational approach to dealing with this Sir Francis Drake issue. I think it could be a moment of, of true, not just healing, but education. I mean, truly look into the man, look into his life, look into what he did and not just say, oh, this was a bad man who, who dealt in slavery. It's really, if you really look at his whole life and the man himself, if you look back in history at just about everybody who's being, you know, vilified now, they're human beings. We all have our dark side and our good side. And to just get rid of everybody who's ever done anything wrong, regardless of whether they turned around and did things right or not, is really, I don't think that's the best way to go forward. Nobody is without a dark side, not anybody. And so anyway, I thank you for at least listening to all of us. And I vote for keeping Sir Francis Drake and adding the Miwok Trail recognition, if that is what the Miwok people would like. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane.
So I'm going to unmute Dwayne Van Deemon again and see if his audio problems are resolved.
Okay, are you, can you hear me?
We hear you.
Oh, good. Well, thank you. I, I had to reboot the Zoom thing here. So yes, I, I've been studying Drake for, gosh, about 20 years. And I put a lot of work into the website, sfdrakefoundation.org to help educate people about Drake himself. And there's a separate page just about what I call the Drake Debate. And on that page, there is an illustration of what we've been discussing. And I think it is a good way to go. A lot of people have shown a lot of interest since I brought this up on Saturday's session with the county. And Danielle has been extremely helpful as well. So what I'd like to do is read a letter that I just wrote and sent to the Marin IJ that is with, it accompanies the, the illustrations, the, the images that's on my website. Coast Miwok Historic Route Markers Along Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. While speaking at a county Zoom session about the name Sir Francis Drake, I showed a mock-up of a Coast Miwok Historic Route Road Marker idea that could be placed in areas along Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. On the Drake Debate page of my website, sfdrakefoundation.org, you can see examples of these road markers, what these road markers could look like. The Coast Miwok Trail or the Old Miwok Trail are possible titles for this ancient cross-country Miwok Trail Route. It would wonderfully combine both Drake and the Coast Miwok people in historic recognition. The idea was approved by everyone who spoke at the meeting after my presentation. I'd like to thank Donette City, who shared the idea of road markers for suggesting the use of these brown historic root signs. It has generally been accepted that Drake, who was a very young man during his brief involvement with his cousin John Hocken slave trade, became a champion for the fair and just treatment of both Blacks and Indigenous people as a mature man. The recent Drake debate has been mostly about the inclusion of the Coast Miwok people whom Drake closely befriended. Both Drake and the ship's chaplain, Francis Fletcher, wrote much about these native people in their published journals. As a Drake researcher, I would like to point out that Drake and Fletcher's published journals go into their observations of these wonderful native people during their five-week stay in 1579 more than any other subject during their nearly three-year journey of circumnavigation and are very respectful and informative. Keeping the name Sir Francis Drake Boulevard and adding several of these historic root signs would be appropriate and would greatly add to the recognition of the native Coast Miwok people who were so essential to our local history. And so that's the letter. And I just also wanted to mention that with these, several of these historic markers along the way, which you can see on that website, sfdrakefoundation.org, it would actually be more visible than the, than the signs, Sir Francis Drake. You would actually, people who live in the county and people who are tourists would come and that's what they would see more than anything else. But other than the, the turnoff off the freeway, that would be the featured name of that road that most people would remember, I think. So I think it is, it's a wonderful combination. And it embraces the, the history of, of Drake and the Miwok people. And I also want to mention that, as I mentioned in the county session, that there was very little written history, like none. It was, it was verbal that, that the Miwok people passed down. And the actual journals, and you can find that on the discovery. There's a lot of excerpts from the Drake journals on the discovery page of my website. So that's quite interesting. So the point is there's tremendous information about these people offered on, on the website that a lot of people would get a lot out of. It's extremely historically informative.
So thank you, Dwayne. Yeah, that's, that's helpful. And I was not able to see the timer very well, but we do need to keep our, our comments to three minutes. So Michelle, if you can move on with the public comment, thank you.
The next three speakers are Richard Applebaum, Steve Dodge, and Joe McGary. So Richard, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening, council. As I hope you all recall, I sent you a very, very lengthy email letter on this topic after the last times came up a couple of months ago. And we wouldn't have the time in three minutes for me to cover all that ground again. And I had a quote that I, that I put in my note to y'all that I'm going to share with everyone for the public's benefit. The famous James Baldwin quote in which he says, "We can disagree and still love each other unless your disagreement is rooted..." The famous James Baldwin quote, in which he says, "We can disagree and still love each other unless your disagreement is rooted in my oppression and denial of my humanity and right to exist." And so for me, it's very simple. If there are a number of members of the community, Coast Miwok and otherwise, that find that the continued use of the name Sir Francis Drake is harmful, triggering, traumatic, upsetting, and and then it's then this is a moral issue. It's not like count up the votes. I don't want to do a rehash of the 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 good and the bad of Sir Francis Drake, who was 500 years ago, 450 years ago around here, and is not part of any recent, anyone that's connected by a bloodline or historical memory, and in the last 150-plus years that has shaped the Bay Area and Marin County, I'm sure there are hundreds of worthy figures if we feel that it's important to use someone's name as opposed to just calling it Fairfax Boulevard, or whatever else we might might be able to come up with, to defend a person who was part of a time and culture where Europeans that had guns and ships and certain technology and went around the world trying to bring their religion and their diseases and to collect gold and, you know, conform others. It's just, it's just absurd to me that there's this vehement defense of this historical figure, and I'm not trying to wipe Sir Francis Drake from the the historical record, but it's not the person whose name we need to continue to use for a street name that's important. So if there are no people that feel triggered and traumatized, then it's not a moral issue, but it seemed like the whole reason this came up and why it came up with the high school and it's come up with the road name is because of that. And so to me, it's just that simple. It's not okay for people in the community to go, well, it doesn't bother me. Well, that's too bad for them. I don't care if it's hurting anybody else. It didn't hurt me. It's been this name all these years. What's the big deal? And it is a big deal because it's a moral issue, and we're in a time of change. In 2020, a lot of things came about, and certain political activism can't come to our town, and awareness is in sensitivities, and we have to take the moral position, not the popular position. So the other thing about the dual name thing, which I see everyone jumping onto, it's someone called in last time from public comment on this and 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 said, why can't we do a side-by-side? And for me, the analogy is if you're in the South, if you've got old longtime Southerners going, why do you have to change Robert E. Lee Boulevard or Andrew Jackson Boulevard to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard? Why don't we just put both names up side by side? And that's the same as saying, don't take down the statue of some person who was part of a culture and and a thinking and a time period. We'll just, we'll just, we'll just make it balanced out because we'll put 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 someone else next to it that can can make another group of people feel better. And so I don't think that solves anything, and I'll leave it there. You all have the long version of what I had to say about this, but you know, for the benefit of the rest of the people that are listening in. Again, if there are people that are feeling harmed, triggered, traumatized, and it's, you know, things change. Life has changed in it. It's a street name, and it's time to take a moral position, not a popular one. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
The next speaker is Steve Dodge, followed by Joe McGary, followed by a call-in user. And Steve, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Um, I don't live in the area anymore. I I didn't even live in Fairfax. When I did, I lived in San Somo, but I've been involved in all of the school renaming. And so I am not here to, you know, make a, you know, to advocate in one direction or the other, but I I do want to inform because I've been following this, you know. Unfortunately, I missed the Saturday meeting that was referred to earlier, but I've been following many others and have, you know, looked into this issue, you know, in a variety of ways. And I think I just want to echo what the previous speaker said, which is that in many ways, you know, I I don't know what Joe Sanchez, I don't know what what's what the story is, you know, with Joe's view. I have immense respect for him. I think that a lot of people are just like, okay, fine, you know, just be done with it. But my attitude with this is that really, you know, the the name itself really is an embarrassment to the to the county. The the Drake was a symbol of white supremacy in the 19th century. He represented, and and when I say that, I'm not talking about like, you know, skinheads storming the Capitol. I'm talking about the dominant ideology of the 19th century that led to Jim Crow and led to the genocide of the Native Americans in California. And Drake was their ideal of what white people should be. And they put him out there as a symbol to for people to emulate, and that is exactly what you have seen now resuscitated in this debate by people who are supporting him using very similar arguments about why, you know, we should be celebrating this great figure while ignoring the historical reasons for putting him there in the first place. So once you have the cross in San Francisco, and you had the cross out in in Drake's Bay, then later on, people, you know, sort of forgot about the Miwok, and then they put in this road. And then they put a high school on the road, and then they put a statue at Larkspur Landing. And all of this was effectively a form of basically eradicating and erasing memory of Miwok history and of Miwok culture in the area and replacing it with an emblem of, you know, Anglo-American culture, which today few people have any attachment to anyway. And yet all of now, now all of a sudden, it's a divisive issue. It's not really divisive. You know, if people just said, oh, actually, yeah, this is a bit, this is a problem. Maybe we should address it in the in the aftermath of Black Lives Matter, where these symbols are coming under scrutiny. But no, they threw up a ruckus and have been fighting it tooth and nail, and now they're happy that they're get that they can put a Miwok symbol just underneath, you know, and that they can get, you know, a few, you know, get, you know, get some acquiescence after months of, you know, resistance. And I just find that disappointing. But like I said, I'm not here to advocate one way or the other, although I do have feelings about it. I do think that you should be aware of this as you make your decision.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
The next speaker is Joe McGary, followed by a call-in user. Joe, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening again, Council. And yeah, I too unfortunately didn't, was unable to attend on Saturday. And I just want to I 100% my my vote is to to center the voices of of the Coast Miwok Tribal Council. And 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 what Richard Applebaum said makes really resonates with me that if there has been, if there's harm being done, and and it is the the wish of the the group who is being harmed to have the symbol of harm removed, then, boy, we should really, really look to do that. And and it's and it's different. It's it takes bold leadership right now because the the issue, it's, we can't go with the the popular voice because the problem is that the 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 folks who have been harmed, they were chased out by the popular voice a long time ago. And so it's it is, it's it's amplifying what what's required in these moments is 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 may not may be very unpopular, and it may may cost council members their seat, you know, down the road, but it's to center the voices that have been harmed. And and so I would vote for option five, which is to to give the final decision to the Coast Miwok Council, the Tribal Council of Marin. And because I get a little concerned when I I hear, like I say, I wasn't there Saturday, but when I I hear a bunch of white people speaking for what that group wants without hearing it from them, that's that's concerning, but maybe, maybe you folks did. But I would, I would, I would vote for option five and 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 give the the decision, the final decision to the Coast Miwok Tribal Council of Marin. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is a telephone caller, and you're the only telephone caller with your hand up, so I am unmuting you. And after the call-in speaker comes Beth Vertical. Caller, you might have to unmute yourself.
Hello, this is, I went from Deborah Benson, Fairfax. I did.
Hi, Deborah. We can hear you.
Okay, so I went from computer to phone because the computer keeps freezing me out. Okay, great. So.
Now we're not hearing you.
Okay, so I had the volume on the TV on, and I had to turn that down. So Sir Francis, are you hearing me?
Yes.
So Sir Francis Drake is a name. I I think that this issue coming up is raising awareness about the, you know, the issues of Anglo and Hispanic people coming in and misplacing an entire nation. You know, one of the biggest genocides maybe in the world. That happened. Sir Francis Drake is a really small part of history. I think that the coming together of the different factions is is a great moment, and I think we should embrace that. I've been, I've been reading a book that was published in 1914 called Spanish and Indian Place Names of California. And it talks about the 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 Spanish coming into San Francisco, discovering it. It talks about various Native tribes. It talks about, most of the names it mentions are of Spanish origin. One of the only Native names is Tamil Pius, Bay Mountain, that came from two Indian words, Tamal, bay, or our country, and I may not be pronouncing this correctly, Pius, mountain. I think that some of the some of the energy around this issue would be well spent in perhaps researching some of the Native names of the places that we live in and 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 creating, creating a vocabulary, a new vocabulary. I'm all for making a compromise, learning from history. And I thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Deborah.
The next speaker is Beth Vertical, followed by Naomi Alessandra, followed by Mariah. Sorry. Naomi, you're unmuted.
Hi, Town Council. Thank you so much for your ongoing public service. I want to add my voice to those who are calling for a change to the name of the main artery that runs through Fairfax. If, as Richard said, there continue to be folks who feel harmed by this name. With all that we are reckoning with in terms of the legacy of colonialism and white supremacy, it no longer makes sense to hold on to this name that is simply a celebration of that very legacy. Just as we now symbolically open our town council meetings with a land acknowledgement, we should also begin the process of reimagining our town's infrastructure to reflect our changing values, our reinterpretation of the past and our intentions for the future. This is not a question of whether Sir Francis Drake was a good man or a bad man. Human beings are complex. Proponents of the status quo say we have to view him through the lens of his time, and that is true. Cultural values shift and change over time. That is exactly the point. Our public landmarks should shift as well to reflect a changing moral compass. This is not Sir Francis Drake being put on trial. Drake is no longer living. He will not suffer for lack of a boulevard. This is a question of whether the colonizing structure that Drake stands for is the one that we want to celebrate now in our time. Those who are alive now, who actively feel the harm of having to drive, walk, or bike on a boulevard every single day that bears the name of a man who enslaved others, are simply more important now than a long-dead man who has been celebrated plenty. Sir Francis Drake Boulevard was named as such in 1929 in order to bring white wealthy tourists to Marin County. That, in its way, has led to the issues that we face now. We live in a present reality where we have the distinct disgrace of being the most segregated county in the Bay Area with the worst racial wealth gap in the state. Clearly, changing the name of this boulevard will not solve those problems in one fell swoop. It is one step among many that are needed in order to imagine a different, more equitable future for this county and our town. It's difficult to imagine that we can do that while simultaneously clinging to this colonialist emblem. All that said, I would agree with Joe that the voices of the Coast Miwok should be centered in this conversation, and I would defer to them and to others who may feel harmed by the name for the final decision on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi.
The next speaker is Beth Vertical, followed by Mariah, followed by Brian Poindexter. Beth, you're unmuted now.
Hey, everyone. It's a beautiful evening. It's probably no surprise to you, but I am all for the change of the name. I agree with the other caller who quoted Baldwin, "It's time to just get comfy with whites not being honored when they came to a new land to them after people of color and not exactly with the best of intentions when they landed." Joe Sanchez was quoted as agreeing to the double name, but that agreement doesn't have any nuance, and I'd like to know more depth. I have to wonder why he's not calling like Jason did about the Redwoods personally about his stance, if he feels so strongly about it. To what I have heard argued, people are complex, and Drake is no exception, so why not roll over? They say a coming together is to honor a white man who was complex alongside of a people who lived here for thousands of years sustainably. I'm not thinking that's the direction of true change. So what if Drake had to come around? Major boulevards named after a human with complexity isn't what that honor is supposed to spotlight. Why streets are named, statues are erected, and high schools also named is supposed to honor people of exemplary values who light the way for how we want to live in the best of our hearts. I don't think anyone, historian or otherwise, would name Drake as a shining beacon of who they want their kids to grow up to be. The idea of Drake is, in fact, who we want them to grow away from being. The Miwok are a much better example. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
The next speaker is Mariah, followed by Brian Poindexter, followed by Frank Egger. And Mariah, you're unmuted now.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for being there and listening to all of our voices. I'm, I'm not super prepared tonight. I'm really sorry, but I just did want to say that I just feel so strongly that Fairfax gets to be what we want it to be. And I think what we want it to be is a town that doesn't go along with things, but that stands up to a truth. And that truth is, like others have said, that if there is trauma, if there is harm that people experience, when they have to be reminded of colonialism, the racism, the subjugation, even if that was in the past, we want to stand up and say, we're not going to continue allowing things that maybe to some people seem simple or not important. These things are important to people who underwent huge trauma, descendants who are living here now and are not necessarily being honored when they're asking for change. And we get to do that in our town. We get to say, it doesn't matter if any other place in Marin is deciding to do this. We're going to be the town that did. Some people feel like it's a token move to excuse massacre of people of color, but I don't think it's just token. I think maybe it's a small move to begin to acknowledge that we can't continue to name places in honor of people who shouldn't be honored. Whether they should have been back then or not, it doesn't really matter. That's not the point. The point is, let's not continue to honor them. If they haven't worked to better the lives of Indigenous people, Black If they haven't worked to better the lives of indigenous people, Black people, immigrants, women, and all who have struggled to have a place at the table of our connected humanity, let's just move past them and do something that we actually care about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariah.
Sorry. Sorry, I just, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, I said I would yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariah.
Okay. The next speaker is Brian Poindexter, followed by Frank Egger, followed by Mark Bell. So, Brian, you're unmuted now.
Hey, folks. I am back to say a few more things. And man, am I appreciative of some of the voices that have come before me. Naomi and, and a few others, the James Baldwin quote, I'm really touched by those. And I do believe that this is a moral issue. So I, I want to underscore and co-sign that. I also really want to address some of the historical thoughts that I've heard in these debates, including the last listening session on Saturday. And I want to just quote from an article that was in the Daily Independent Journal, San Rafael, California. This is from Friday, March 17th, 1950. And the article is an editorial, but it's, it points out that the naming of Sir Francis Drake High School was based on, quote, "As most all Marinites know, Drake was the first white man to touch Marin shores, or for that matter, the shores of California and the West. He came here in 1579." So really, when we choose to historicize that and memorialize that, what we are choosing to historicize is the arrival of white people on these shores. And the date is really interesting, 21579. For millennia, there was a history of a different kind of people that were here. And we don't even represent that history with any level of diligence in this county. So my advocacy here is based on definitely remembering history. I learned about Sir Francis Drake in a high school in Texas. I wasn't even in California at that time. I never learned about the Coast Miwok people, and I don't see any representations actively in Marin culture here. And I want to see that culture be represented because that history lasts longer than white folks in Marin County. And I think that's the history that has been erased for too long. And I want to continue that thread just a little bit by quoting an author named Karen Till, who says that, um, "These kinds of street naming struggles," quote, "often reflect larger social disputes about who has authority to create, define, interpret, and represent collective pasts through place." That's why I think this renaming really matters. And I think it's important to remember that because native populations were made extinct, their voices are now in number, at least, and in these types of forums, very small. And that renaming a boulevard is a way to lift up those voices that we, as white people, have a history of exterminating and extinguishing. Uh, so I think these kinds of renaming's can speak volumes in places where there just aren't the types of voices left because of our actions. So I, I really would like to restore history by the renaming of Sir Francis Drake. I'd like to allow the Coast Miwok Tribal Council to have voice in what to name it. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Next speaker is Frank Egger, followed by Mark Bell. Frank, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Frank Egger, Metaway. If the name is changed, business and property owners along Sir Francis Drake Boulevard would be faced with the expense of changing addresses, titles, deeds, insurance, wills, trusts, and driver's licenses, to name a few. At a time when small businesses are struggling during the pandemic because of lost business, we should not be placing this additional burden on them. Many of them are going broke. Restaurants and grocery stores with liquor licenses will have to go through a process of dealing with the ABC and changing their licenses and other state and federal permits. Who will pay their lawyers and compliance directors to make those changes? Before making such a change, our supervisors, mayors, and council members need to fully engage their residents, debate the issues in person, and allow them to, allow them the opportunity to vote if necessary. If it were to be placed on a regular ballot, the cost would be $2 per voter for Fairfax, that is $12,000, a bargain. And the decision would have community buy-in either way. All of our local governmental agencies are faced with significant losses in revenue. The Ross Town Council and Larchford City Council made wise decisions. If you think you want to change, to rename Drake, please let us vote. Adding, um, a monument with Miwok signs along the route is also the right thing to do. It makes sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank.
Uh, the next speaker is Mark Bell. You're unmuted, Mark.
I think if people feel guilty and are totally crushed psychologically by some guy who spent five weeks here and was on good terms with the Miwoks, I think those people have much deeper problems than the street sign. But if you want to go that route, Fairfax itself, Lord Fairfax, his family made money off of slaves for years and years and years. So we need to change the name of Fairfax if you want to start to deal with this issue. Let's look at the Spanish. Drake was here for five weeks. English people didn't come back. The Spanish were here. They're the ones who decimated the tribes. So that means that we need to change all the names of all the street signs that are Spanish. Let's look at, there are street signs in Fairfax that are Italian. Look at the Romans. Look what they did to slaves in the, in the Colosseum. You can still go and feel the vibes of the people who died in the Colosseum for the enjoyment of the wealthy Romans. So let's get rid of the Italian names. I like, I walk down the street, it says Sherman Way. I'm crushed. General Sherman committed war crimes, even though he was a general for the North, when he decimated that stretch in Georgia during the Civil War. That was a war crime. That was attack against a civilian population. And yet I see Sherman Way. Oh, someone says it's named after Carol Sherman? Well, I don't see it because I guess obviously facts don't mean anything. It's how I feel. And it makes me feel bad when I think about people starving in, in Georgia in, what was it, 1864, 1865? And come on, get real. This, this whole guilt thing, guilt, guilt, guilt. I think these people have a bigger problem than a lot of other people do. I think that, yes, the Miwok should be consulted. The Miwok should have a, a voice in what happens here. Uh, that's fine. Maybe we should, uh, have it, put it on the ballot with three choices. Leave it, add the Miwok sign, or add a different name. But, I mean, it's like, I can't, I just find it really impossible to believe that people walk down a street and are totally psychologically crushed because there's a street sign that says Sir Francis Drake Boulevard or Sherman Way or Vanny Way or San Geronimo Avenue or San Anselmo Avenue. Really? Come on. The money can be spent in so many better ways than on street signs. We can look at giving money, setting up scholarships, et cetera, setting up courses in schools that would teach something about the Miwoks, giving scholarships to people who have, who are of Miwok descent so that they can get this into, into the society in a way that people will understand and so that they can be appreciated for what they have.
We need to correct. Thank you. So, Michelle, we don't have any more callers right now?
That is correct. If you would like to use the public call.
I'll just point out that a lot of people have said that they would like to see, and in one caller actually referred to the options that Garrett listed for us. Option number four is being to go back and see what the Coast Miwok people would say, but that's, I'm not sure that was what Garrett meant anyway in the staff report. We've been asked as a jurisdiction to make a decision, and then that decision will be, go back to a group with the other jurisdictions' decisions. So this is, it's getting complicated. I would love to hear from Jason, anyway, who's in the, who's listening now, if he wanted to call in, because people have asked to hear what the, what that perspective is. And it's,
I know Joe Sanchez was trying to call in. He was having some technical difficulties.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, very informative at this point, since people are asking for that. Because this is a complicated decision for us. We don't, uh, this isn't getting any easier. So if there is any point, I would say where Joe Sanchez or Jason, but Joe Sanchez in particular because he had already apparently weighed in on this, could call in, that would be welcome.
Yeah, it sure, it certainly will be.
At this point, though,
I mean, it doesn't sound like any of us were on that call, and I have no reason to not believe, um, like, or anyone else that was on the call, but it would sure be nice to hear their perspective.
Yeah, I've talked with the county who, who said also.
Okay, Michelle, he is having difficulty, um, I guess, calling in. Is the number on, is the phone number on the,
Agenda?
Agenda, is it 669-900-9128? Is that the accurate phone number?
That is the accurate number, yes, for Zoom. And then he needs to enter the webinar ID.
Oh. Okay, the webinar ID, okay, which is
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just going to repeat that. The phone number is, um, 669-900-9128. And then you put in the ID number, And then you, 9 to get into the queue, right?
Yes, but, um, he should wait for the prompt to put in the ID number, not like altogether with the phone number.
Yeah. So I think we can bring it back to council and, uh, but we'll interrupt our discussion if we do get a call from either Joe or Jason, because I think we'd particularly like to hear from them under the circumstances.
Um,
So I have thoughts, but I'll listen to other people's thoughts first.
Mayor?
Yeah.
If I may, I, I would like, I would like to go first.
Please.
Okay. So, um, I am sorry that we haven't heard from Joe, and I absolutely respect Jason potentially choosing not to at this point because they have weighed in multiple times. Uh, being as, you know, one of the two working group members, I have attended all of the listening sessions and had a very thorough report from Katie Rice about last Saturday's meeting, which, um, I appreciate all the hard work. I've learned a tremendous amount through this, uh, process, both historical, ethical, emotional. And I did prepare this statement because, um, it's so important that I capture all of the things that, um, that I would like to share here, um, that have led me to a decision. So, um, as a community representative, I speak not only for those who express a strong opinion. I speak for those whose voices have been silenced and those who suffered in the past and are no longer here to teach and speak to us. I also speak for those who will grow up here, who will be born here or will visit here and learn about our values based on who we name things after. Last summer, we heard the voices of our youth, of our Black and Brown and Indigenous community members and their white allies asking for a deep look at our embedded systems. I was listening when people reached out, when the Coast Miwok Tribal Council came to speak with us in Belinas Park, and they shared their stories, and when the petitions started circulating, asking for the renaming of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. It was visceral, and it was powerful, and it was numerous. Um, the following are some of what I heard at the earlier listening sessions, and these are the things that stood out for me. To name, to rename, excuse me, I'll start that one again, to rename is not an erasing of history, but a recognition of a history long erased. Another one, remembering history needs to be in context. History books, museums, and libraries, and not on signs that we and our visitors pass by every day while traversing one of the most beautiful and well-protected east-west corridors in the world. Another, a new world, a new way. Another, our young folks are living in a completely different world, and this is a restorative opportunity. They are learning that in many cases, our systems and constructs are constructs of a world that bears no resemblance to the world that they are growing up in. We teach diversity, and we value, and we strive for diversity, and we even regret our lack of diversity. And yet we are attached to the name of a white male colonizer. Sir Francis Drake was a man of his time. For all the things he was or he was not, he's had his time. Regardless of his actions and the norms of the time he lived in, and despite his character transformation, and that that may be worthy of recognition, the path that he paved for the colonizers who followed after him led to the replacement of the names and the traditional cultures that were here long before them. The conversation has become about different interpretations of history, which really is not core to this issue. It is how those interpretations and the decision to honor and exalt a human being by assigning their name to something impacts others. Some are saying that this is a symbolic gesture to absolve our white guilt. And I agree that standalone symbolism is performative. But, and in the words of Chantel Walker, who was the Assistant Director of the Marin County Library and was part of our working group, she quote, quote, "Symbolism does matter, and progressive symbolism is transactional. It's a part of a continuum of change and a starting point that builds momentum. And although this is but a sliver of the work, from the equity perspective, it has huge implications." The Black Lives Matter movement and their allies are chanting, "Say their names," because naming does make a difference. And when you call their names, you remember their unique lives and you honor their legacy. Having said all that, I would vote, I do vote, to change the name of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard inside the Fairfax Town Limits and center the Coast Miwok in the process of choosing a new name. So there's my piece with great, um, voluminous thought put in and lifting up voices that we unfortunately don't usually get to hear from.
I'll go second, if it appears nobody else would like to. So I know that Councilmember Goddard and Mayor Ackerman have been involved in this much longer than I have. So I know that Councilmember Goddard and Mayor Ackerman have been involved in this much longer than I have. And, but I did participate in some of the earlier listening sessions of the county. My recollection is this started out of concerns that Sir Francis Drake was a slave trader at one point in his life. And it. It transfix to, I, I haven't heard that anybody has been concerned that he mistreated. The coastal Mewoc, but that he was a slave trader. So I think it's wonderful what this has brought out is that we're now looking at. How do we honor the coastal Mewoc? But I think one of the issues that was brought up by some of our callers was. There are people that are being harmed by this and one of the callers said something like, this is like Robert E. Lee's name. I lived in the South. I lived in the Deep South. It's not the same thing. And also, one of the callers said something about, this is white people telling you to keep the name. What I heard is white people telling us to rename and white people telling us to keep the name. What I did hear about a month ago. And this is not a Fairfax resident, but it's Mayor Brian Colbert. Who is the only African American that's been elected to a city council in Marin County or. I don't believe there's ever been an African American on the Board of Supervisors. And he very much was very concerned about the divisiveness in this community. Which has persisted for a very long time. Before I finish, I see that we have Jason Desler with his hand up. So maybe we should do that and then we'll go back.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay. Jason, I've unmuted you.
Yes, open to each. Um, thank you once again. My counsel and I, you know, we've been chatting back and forth through text. And we're having some trouble and I don't really want to speak. For uh, individual members, but one thing that I've come up with. First of all, I'd just like to thank all of you, all of you who have spoken in opposition. Because one, it makes us realize who we are. And two, um, some of the things that were said by some of the opposers, I don't think you really realize what you have said. It was very powerful towards us and uh, for us. And uh, I just really want to thank you guys for that because the spirit works in many ways. And I think he will use our enemies to bless us. And one thing that we have been discussing that I will say is that to remind you all of this cost. Nothing can ever replace the cost. Of my people. To hear this talk about cost and then to hear you all talk about my people is really bothering to us. And what I've come up on my own and what I've heard over the past meetings in the past. You know, I understand, I totally understand there's homeless priorities and healthcare issues. And I'm one hundred percent for all that, you know. But to remind you all, you know, Black Lives Matter started this. So I just want to ask you all hypothetically to think about when we end this conversation. If our priorities and our homelessness and our healthcare and such was really taken care of. Would this name change really be an issue? Because I seem, it seems to be that cost seems to be the main stumble here of what's holding everything back. And that's what we've come up with. And uh, you know, I had a few things to say earlier and I was debating whether I should raise my hand or not. But like I said, we are spiritual people and we work in spirit. And this is what I've come up with after I've heard everybody speak. So once again, I thank you all. I thank everybody for everything that everybody has said. And um, you know, uh, I would really love to hear my cousin Joe speak because you know, he's, he's our elder. He's very powerful. He's a very wise man and you know, those are the people that we look up to for advice. And I'm just speaking as a young man, um, because my counsel is having trouble and not able to speak to you all right now. So I, I hope that there is a better way that you all can reach out to us so that we can speak. As a group and, and, and uh, you know, uh, give the community what they want. Because it seems that they want to hear us. This is not something that we are trying to push on anybody. So once again, thank you all.
Thank you, Jason. If by having trouble, you mean that Joe is having a hard time calling in. We'll continue to work with him if, if we can get him, but thank you very much for speaking. And. We'll continue the conversation here and maybe we'll want to talk with you again. So Barbara, you were.
Yeah, well, so um, thank you very much, Jason. So my concern is not about costs, it's about divisiveness in this community. And the broader community and. I don't think there's a perfect solution for this. I, I do feel that and when Brian Colbert wrote his Marin Voice. He was talking about the dual naming approach as being a way to sort of, not everyone. On either side. And I wish there weren't so many sides here. I, I wish we were all together on this. This is not easy, is. Not everyone will get completely what they want, but I do feel that. And I don't have any particular affinity for Sir Francis Drake. I've lived here in Marin for thirty-one years and I never even thought about it until, till all this came up. It was just a name, meant nothing to me. And I saw a picture and it meant nothing to me. So I've been ignorant all these thirty-one years up until maybe about a year ago. So my thoughts are this is, I think we should consider the idea. Of the co-naming approach with the historic designation. And reaching out to the coastal Mewoc because I think what this has brought up. Is a way. To attempt in a very small way to honor the coastal Mewoc. And even though it started with the idea of Sir Francis Drake as being a slave trader in his early, earlier times. And the real harm was to the African American community. Now we have brought something out. That just came apart, you know, came about as part of these discussions, which I think is wonderful. So my thoughts are, in order to heal the divide in our community. And we've heard from so many on both sides of this. I think a compromise of the dual naming approach with the historic designation. And having the coastal Mewoc pick what the appropriate name is. Working with the elders. Seems to me not a perfect solution, but it's a way to move us forward. Because there is so much divide in this community over this and so many other issues. So that are, those are my thoughts. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Barbara. Well, the mayor usually goes last, so I'm not saying unless you want me to. But Stephanie Chance. And you know, we don't have to, we can hear each other before we cast a vote too. I mean, we can discuss it, go around and see what people are thinking and.
Chance, you want to go? Or you want me to go?
I'd love to hear from you, Vice Mayor Hellman.
Okay, I, I wrote a statement as well, um, and I. I'm really disappointed not to um. Hear from Joe, not feeling very well right now, um. So, um, I'm gonna take a sip of water.
Stephanie, if you're not feeling well. Take care of yourself.
Yeah, thank you. So um, like, like all of my colleagues on the council, I take this matter very seriously and. And personally, um, I grew up here in Marin County and I've been driving on this boulevard close to fifty years now. And in total, I've probably spent close to thirty hours listening to our community between the. Drake HS thirteen twenty-seven renaming effort and all of our community listening sessions. And I want to thank. Councilmembers Goddard and Cutrone and uh, Mayor Ackerman for your support with our. With our effort here, um, I know it's, it's been a challenging one, um, and you know. It's definitely a sensitive one. So I want to share that I've really expanded my thinking and grown from this whole experience. And it's been painful for me to bear witness to the divisions in the community related to this topic. And I've had some tough conversations with people close to me about my views on this and it's forced me to pause and listen more deeply. And I wish our listening sessions could have been facilitated to get underneath people's beliefs and fears and assumptions. To hold up the mirror. And to that end, I would like to thank people like Mr. Michael Ardeto and Susan Baron Pascal. And Mr. Dodge and Mr. Van Demon, Jasper Thielen, Cheesy Brown. And young adults stepping forward as they have since last summer, people like Sage Ross. Who stated she wants to reconnect with the land she lives on. And despite some claims, I've yet to hear anyone making an effort to alter history or erase history. And in my estimation, the notion of renaming is not an example of cancel culture. Rather, it is an effort to make history more accurate by inviting and including all the participants. Perspectives and stories that contributed to the, to that period. And currently, it's predominantly a white male dominated version of history. And so all this said, I'm, I'm really not interested in character assassination of Sir Francis Drake. Or really anyone else for that matter. And he was an extraordinary figure in world history without question. And he was a colonizer and a slave trader for the Queen of England and he erected her flag here. And these simple facts alone, as it's been said multiple times this evening, we know create discomfort, harm. And um. You know, looking up at Sir Francis Drake Boulevard sign, I would think from my conversations with Coast Mewoc. Is, is like having an open wound for natives of this land, for the Coast Mewoc people. And for me, that's enough. It's, it's important enough to make a change. As a community leader, it's important to begin taking action toward inclusivity and. As far as this being potentially a performative action, I reject this notion as well. I agree with Mr. Van Demon that the, the high visibility of the signage. And I think about this being, um, as a mother, this being a teachable moment. I can very much see, you know, being at a stoplight and talking to your child about, you know, child. Children are very inquisitive and, you know, asking what is Coast Mewoc? And like I said, the high volumes of traffic on this boulevard that goes from the coast to the freeway. I see this. As a. As a very good opportunity and we need to see all opportunities to lift up what has almost been eradicate. Eradicated with such injustice. So I wanted to share what I think is interesting that the Andrew Mellon Foundation is spending a quarter of a billion dollars. On a monuments project to reimagine and rebuild commemorative spaces. And transform the way history is told in the United States. The project seeks to ensure that future generations inherit a memorial landscape that reflects. The vast rich complexity of the American experience and tells a fuller, more inclusive story of our history. And our many forebears. Monuments and memorials instruct us in our understanding of the past. They shape powerful national narratives that say some of us ought to be visible and celebrated. And some of us ought to be invisible and ignored. Our country's current monument landscape offers an incomplete and even inaccurate picture of our glorious. Complex and diverse history. So. I understand from both sides of this debate that Drake was here for five weeks. And I haven't heard from one person what he has done. That's particularly noteworthy in terms of his contribution to our region. And so, you know, that's something that, you know, if we, if you want to name the beach after him. And the bay after him, but I just think that we have way too much named after this individual. And again, I don't, I'm not interested in character assassination. And for me, the discussion is, is more about, you know, as a community leader. Centering this discussion around where we want to be as a community. And designing our future as, you know. I think we can align on values and I'm more interested in looking ahead. And gaining wisdom from the past. And um, I think. There's a systemic seismic shift that honestly impacts all aspect of our culture. And, and society ahead of us and there's a lot of work to be done. And with that, I will just say that I'm in favor of a change and I would like to. Hear from others on what that looks like. I would like to hear from Joe Sanchez if he can dial in. Because I really want input from him on that last call and if, and here. You, you know, when I heard from, uh, when I read Brian Colbert's ru- uh, piece, my first knee jerk response was. Haven't the Co- Coast Mewoc compromised and sacrificed enough, you know? Um, like the co-naming to me feels like, you know, like I said, haven't they sacrificed enough? Um, and my preference would be for a full-on change. So I'll, I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Okay, like, I guess. I'm up.
We, we'll go around again, but.
Yeah.
You're up now.
Yeah. This has been weighing on me in a way that I did not expect it to be weighing on me, like for weeks. Like, uh, it's just been, been really thinking about it a lot. And, and asking a lot of folks. I, I, I do wish, uh, Joe was on the call and I'm, I'm very thankful that Jason spoke. And I'm also very grateful for Dean Hoagland, who is the Chair of the, the Coast Mewoc Tribal Council. Who I've been able to be in contact with as well as, as Buffy at uh, the Great Rancheria. As well as Laurel Ross, who, who has also spoken on this. And so there are, there are many. And so there, there are many indigenous voices that have shared some, some really important information, um, and I'm very grateful for that, for helping me understand what's being asked of us, uh, as, as a people in, in Marin. And I'm holding the fact that we're, you know, we're all on stolen land. We, we, we mentioned it at the start of these meetings. And I'm holding that members of the Coast Mewoc community came forward and asked that this process take place. And I'm also holding that naming is deeply associated with identity. I was thinking about it today when I was getting lunch, just thinking, oh, my name is Chance. Who would I be if I wasn't Chance? And it's so connected, the identity of, of a place and a name. And it's true for individuals as it's true for cities and towns and the buildings we erect and and to think symbolically of our, what is currently our home, uh, Marin County, named after Chief Marin. And to think about Sir Francis Drake as the largest artery cutting through the heart of Marin is very symbolic to me. Um, and I think it speaks to some of the things that some of the folks have brought up on this call. And I just want to say, you know, throughout the listening sessions in public open time on this item, I've heard from proponents and opponents of this process, I've heard calls to center Coast Mewoc, who have been stewards of this land long before Europeans began to probe this really rich landscape. And I've also heard from passionate residents like Michael Ardito, who I, I admire very much and whose ancestors have also lived on this land and taken care of this land for generations too. Uh, and, and Mike continues to do so. He's been a dedicated member of the Open Space Committee. And I think a lot of people have highlighted that this conversation oddly quickly moved from whether or not Drake should be renamed and what, what the name represents for community, for our community. And instead, the conversation shifted to whether or not Drake was a good guy, you know, he, he only enslaved some people, uh, you know, and maybe he changed his ways or he learned a little bit about it, learned his lesson about not, you know, shackling up people and selling them to other people. And, uh, in these listening sessions, I've been concerned that when those opposed to this conversation say they don't want to hear from allies of native peoples, they want to hear from the Coast Mewoc themselves. And then throughout this process, I've heard the Coast Mewoc come forward and say they want the name changed. And then the community says, well, let's put it to a vote. And I just wanted to acknowledge that. What's troubling for that, for me, when why I, I don't think that's the appropriate process is that we've gone through centuries of unkept treaty promises of dislocation, relocation, of redlining, all of these oppressive things that, that new folks who moved in have done to disenfranchise the original people of this land. And so much so that having a vote would further that very same process of disenfranchisement that we're trying to root out through these discussions. Uh, and I wanted to highlight something that Naomi said too, which is that through this process, we've come to learn that the roadway named Sir Francis Drake was the recommendation of a marketing team. And they wanted to get, it was an alluring story to get more tourists. And now a hundred years later, almost, right? We're actually reassessing how the current honorary designation of this roadway serves our community. And we may not revisit this kind of discussion again in our lifetime. So where I see us standing right now, I wonder how do we want to brand Fairfax or brand Marin for the next one hundred years? And and I think we, you know, I, I, I hear Jason speaking earlier about, you know, the return of the Mewoc, the, you know, you know, inviting these people back to their homeland. And I, that's a super compelling next one hundred years for me. And if we can signal that intention as a community, that is huge for me. And Councilmember Kohler, I know you mentioned that, you know, uh, you know, we can find a small way to honor the Mewoc and that there, you know, it's not easy and we might not be able to find the balance uh, that everybody agrees on, but maybe everybody can can find a compromise that nobody likes or something like that, or, um, and I, I've been sitting with that today as well. And I, I think I really feel like you can't compromise on injustice. Uh, you can't say, what if we just make it a little unjust for you or just leave it a little unjust? I think that's really difficult to sell to marginalized and, and uh, other, you know, marginalized communities and folks that have been disadvantaged for so long. So to say that the current name will remain official maintains that subjugation for me, the fact that there's an official name still and that there's, you know, a couple more signs, but it's not officially a change. Uh, and what it says to me is that we're just trying to say what represents what was, but we're still upholding and uplifting what has been prevailing for a long time. And I don't think that aligns with what Jason said earlier about the desire to, to call Coast Mewoc folks home. And also the cost that, you know, it's going to cost Fairfax, what, two grand, maybe less than two thousand dollars? Uh, a, a vote would cost six times as much. Um, and, and Jason also said so eloquently the real cost of what's taking place on this land and how we can begin to try to confront that. And, and, and so I'm feeling very strongly actually about about moving forward with a, a process and and centering the Coast Mewoc through that process. Thanks.
Thank you. So, um, I had one small thing that I wrote that I thought maybe I would say before we got to public comment, just to try to open up our thinking and I didn't say it because we really are trying not to speak our opinions before we hear public comment, but just listen first, but I'll just say that, I'll read that and then I'll try to give my thoughts at this moment. That this is, this isn't, I've heard throughout all the months of thinking about this issue, which I have thought about an enormous amount. And I, I actually did know something about Sir Francis Drake before this started because when we moved to California, I read a book about California history and so I knew something about his landing here, but I've learned much more about, about Sir Francis Drake during this period and it's been fascinating what a complex character and from what a complex history is complex, what a different world he was living in. He was working for the Queen. Everybody at that time in England worked for the Queen on one level or another. And, you know, so it's just, it's unimaginable how different it is, it was then than it is now, but I I find it, 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 it's, it doesn't make sense to me to make this be a referendum on Sir Francis Drake or Francis Drake, this person. It's I think it's really about us or it should be about us. It's about us, all the people living here now. And about us hearing each other and learning and about teaching our kids and about welcoming others to this land and who we welcome to this land and who feels welcome to this land. And in short, making the world the best that we can. That's what it's about. It's not about looking backwards. It's about looking forward. It's about doing what we can do now to make everything better. And I, at this point, I'm ad-libbing. I really feel compelled to say that as I think about this, it constantly comes back to me that, as you know, I'm very concerned about what we're going to do about climate change. And I think I've said in the past that if people five hundred years from now look back at us, they might not put statues up about us because they might say those were the people that were not paying any attention while the climate got to the tipping point that has caused all the problems that we've had for the next five hundred years. I mean, who knows what people will say? Maybe they won't, maybe we'll get it together, but at this point, it's looking like we may go down in whatever, whoever makes history in the future as the people who just didn't do anywhere near enough and had our own concerns that we were thinking about at the time and didn't step off of our, of our comfort zone and, and deal with something that was a serious emergency. It's, and yet it may not look like that to us today because we're thinking about whatever else we're thinking about. But I think that there's, it's not a coincidence that there are these two huge things that are now before us. One of them is the changing climate and all the other environmental walls that we're hitting. And the other being social justice and equity. Those two huge currents and those two things coming to this boiling point at this point, I don't think that's a coincidence. I think they're closely related, not only closely related because one depends on the other, but closely related in their causes of why they're coming to a point right now. And I, that's, you could almost say that there were four stages of human history in the, in a big picture. I'm, I'm reading a particular book that kind of points this out. So this is, the one stage was when we were nomadic. We tend to really idolize that time because it's, sounds really cool, but there were only the maximum four hundred thousand humans on the entire planet at that point. But people didn't have property. They didn't have ownership of things. They were very much in tune with nature because they were nomadic and they gathered their food. And then there was a stage when agriculture came about. And agriculture allowed the population to grow much larger, but it also meant that there were tools and there was land ownership and people stayed in one place and it became, all those things became an issue. And a lot of people point back to the time when we started doing agriculture as being a time when a lot of the things that define the conflict between civilizations became uh, became big issues. And then, but then during both of those times, and especially the agricultural time when life became much more difficult because there was this, all this work to do, tending the crops, the, the source of energy was muscle power, animals and humans. And so there was exploitation became part of the thing because somebody had to just work very, very hard in order to do this work. And somebody else maybe could live on the spoils of that and there was a little bit of elevation of culture. And so there became this whole hierarchy of who got to, who got to, to make music and who got to dig in the soil or whatever. And that, then there was the era where fossil fuels came about and all of a sudden there's explosion of energy and civilization climbed, but during that era, of course, we exploited the earth and we have this exploitative culture of, of the planet. And now we're at a point where we're realizing the limitation of that really suddenly, and we have to change that, but we can envision a time that could be absolutely amazing, although we don't know if we can get there from where we are now because we've got so much inertia with so many things. But that's why I say I think that there's a confluence between these two, these two things that are happening now. We're realizing that we've got the, the repercussions of exploitation of people and stealing of land. And we've also got the repercussions of having dug into the earth and grabbed everything we possibly can and burned it up and in order to support an ever huger society and an ever huger population. So here we are trying to work our way out of this. But back to figuring out how to rename, whether to rename this boulevard. I have pretty much come to the point where I was feeling, and I feel this way now, that I am not, I am not attached to the name Sir Francis Drake. It's been interesting learning about him, but I'm ready to let it go. I'm ready to, to, for it to be renamed. We're not here to pick the name, but I would be happy with a name Coast Mewoc Trail or whatever to honor the Mewoc. That sounds to me like I would be very happy to do that. The only concern and the cost, one of the things that we found when, when we were on the, the joint county group, uh, when the research was done by, by staff as to what it would cost on the public level, it was surprisingly small. And on the private level, I, I understand that it's a hassle for each individual, but I have moved, I don't know how many times in my life, it's at least thirty times that my family and or myself have moved. And so, yeah, you change your address, you have to do all that. I've been through that. It doesn't seem like, it seems like something we can do. The only concern that I have with that is the divisiveness. And to put it as clearly as I can think, to put it, it's, it's like a political organizing strategy. If you're trying to bring people, if you're trying to change thinking and move things in a certain direction, you need to call people in rather than piss them off. And if we, if every time people think about this, they get angry, I don't know whether that accomplishes what we would like to accomplish, which is to try to get people thinking about a different way of being and appreciating all of the history, all of the people who have been here, all of the ways that we can live and hearing each other, hearing all the people who are here. And that's what, that's what I would like to see. That's the result we're looking for. I just hope that we don't make that result harder to get to by dividing people so much. So I was very, very happy just in recent days to hear about this idea that seems to be, that seems to have come out and I'm disappointed that tonight we didn't hear of, as much about it as we might have of the, this, the, the sort of a possible consensus that we can keep the same name, but have the historical designations. That seemed like, I was so excited that there might be a way that we could all come together and not be upset when this is over with and be able to move on to educating our kids about about what, where we came from.
Mayor, may I, may I add something, um, because I think I've been sort of the lone voice here. Um, and I'm going to wrap it up quickly because I think our Vice Mayor Hellman is fading very quickly. Is, um, I've listened to all of what you've said, but I want to say I've been listening to constituents who have been very passionate about the name change and not wanting to see the name change. And I think about why I came to Fairfax so many years ago and how much I enjoy this community, which is so different. And our council, which has been so different than others and stepped out in areas no other council goes beyond, you know, our little jurisdiction. So my good friend, Marnie Glickman, led the name change for the Dixie School District to what it is, maybe not what it is now, but led that work to a severe detriment to herself and her family. I don't think this is the same thing, but I think, um, hearing what all, all of you said and knowing that I will upset many constituents who do not want to see a name change. And I also do feel that for a lot of folks in town that have to change, that are perhaps elderly, this isn't the same, like just moving. They will have to change a number of things like Frank said, and hopefully we can put folks in touch with, uh, some of the folks in the aging community that can help people get through that process. Cause I don't think it's without. Um, I know if I was looking at it, I might be, oh, when am I going to do it? But I will say this. But I will say this, I think you have all persuaded me and I think back to my roots of coming here. I would have liked if we could have done more of the dual naming, I would have liked to have heard from Joe Sanchez and I do not discount what has been said to us about the meeting last Saturday. But at this point, I think it's okay to change the name. We may be the only jurisdiction going there. And I I don't know how that would be resolved. But I I want to apologize to so many folks who have been so passionate about not changing the name. And I do not want to discount what they brought up. And my concern is some of the people that testified about changing the name seem to really disparage those folks. All of this council is a bunch of white people. And everyone who called in, as far as I can tell, the white people other than Jason Deschler. We don't have easy answers here. I'm sorry. This has been so divisive. It will continue. People will be very upset about this. Other people may be pleased about it. But we're not here to change to pick what the name is. So let's just take a vote now. And I would make a motion that let's go ahead and vote for options which is support the option one, support the renaming of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And let's try to wrap this up. So our council member Hellman can go to bed.
I'm ready to second that motion and with gratitude to Councilmember Kohler.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'm happy to see that vote taken. Yeah. Stephanie, you ready? Okay, it sounds like we're voting.
Why don't we take a vote? Let's get through this. Can we do the roll call?
And as far as what will happen, I believe what will happen is it might end up being a different name here and a different name in in Sir Francis Drake Boulevard in Ross, for example, but that's that's what the that is.
Mayor, if I may, with the the item tonight was to was to give direction to to yourself and myself in order to go back to the working group and then we'll
Well, yeah. I guess that's a possibility. Okay, so let's take the vote. I'll go ahead and do the roll call. So Councilmember Cutrone.
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Councilmember Guttered.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Hellman.
Your minute.
Aye.
There we go. And I vote aye as well. So yes, as Renee says, that I guess really means that she and I will go back to the working group. But the working group had asked us as a jurisdiction to make a decision and there's our decision.
Can I, moving on to item 15, I think because Vice Mayor Hellman is ill and needs to go. My suggestion would be this, and since it's past 11:30. I think this is a really important issue. I don't think we can discuss it tonight. But I would like to propose that we start our meeting on March 17th at 5:30 and take this item up first and then move on to our second item, which is the housing issues. I think it's just too important for us to put this off longer. So that would be my motion would be to move item 15.
Discuss it before you make a motion. Just hear other opinions. I'd like to just say that the thing on the 17th is that we were planning to have a special meeting with the Climate Action Committee first and then have a council meeting. So I'm I'm fine with.
I think we were doing the Housing Planning Commission as well. It wasn't just with the Climate Action Committee.
But that was changed earlier.
Okay, we originally planned to do a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on Housing Issues with EMC. We changed that to still do housing issues and then a joint meeting with Climate Action. And I'm suggesting that we really need to move forward on discussing the police chief selection. And so if we start at 5:30, I think we may be able to get back on track with time.
So you're you're wanting to have the council meeting because what we're what we were talking about earlier tonight was that on the 17th, we'll have two meetings. We'll have a joint meeting with the Climate Action Committee and we'll have a council meeting. And the council meeting agenda is now growing with by yet another thing. So it's looking like it's going to be a pretty much full size council meeting in addition to the special. Would we have a joint meeting with the Climate Action Committee first thing in the evening? Maybe start it earlier or should we have the council meeting first? And then have the Climate Action Committee. I just don't want.
My suggestion would be to do the council meeting first and then do the housing and then the housing part of that and then do the climate action. Renee has her hand up, though.
Well, it went down, but my 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 proposal was that instead of doing the joint working session with the Planning Commission around housing with the with EMC there that we move in there were two slots. There was the Climate Action Committee Joint Session and then the and then the Planning Commission Joint Session. And we continue with that same structure, but it not be we won't have awarded the bid. We'll just have an update and introduction to RENA and housing laws. And then we'll go into the council meeting. The regular council meeting. Okay, Garrett, you can it's past my bedtime. You can clarify.
Well, I thought maybe I have it wrong. I thought the way to do it is the Climate Action Committee, the special study session, that's time specific with a limited time. And so the dog pattern I thought was you hold that at 5:30, you're done at seven. Then at whatever, 7:15, 7:30, then you would start the special council meeting. Within the special council meeting, you now would have two items. One would be the Police Chief Selection Interview Process Discussion. And then the other would be the housing element presentation. So it wouldn't be a special session. And believe it was going to be a joint session with the planning commission either, although they're more than welcome to attend. But that would be the item and that would be the discussion and the presentation. That's that's what I thought the council was. Maybe that's what we do.
That makes sense. I think that makes sense. Why don't we do that?
Okay, so is that your motion?
So I would make the motion that we move item 15 to March 17th with the special council meeting. We start the special council, the Climate Action Committee session at 5:30. And then we move on to the special council meeting.
Second.
Okay.
Okay.
Council.
Somebody need to second that motion?
I think Councilmember got it.
Would somebody second the motion?
Renee seconded.
Three times.
We've got it.
Yeah.
Barbara made the motion. Renee seconded it.
And I I vote aye.
Okay, Barbara.
She froze. That's why she's not hearing what's going on.
I because she made the motion. Let's let's get back to her when she unfreezes. Renee.
Yes.
Yes. And
Two seconds.
With us.
Barbara, Councilmember Kohler, you keep freezing, so you've missed it. We have seconded.
Okay, well, you guys froze too.
Okay, so do you vote aye, Barbara?
Yeah.
How do you?
Yes, aye.
Excuse me.
Now, if we can find Stephanie, we've got a.
Town clerk needs to interrupt this meeting.
Okay.
A moment. Vice Mayor Hellman has left the meeting at 12:08 PM. She needed to leave the meeting. So she absent from this vote. Thank you.
All right, so we'll have Vice Mayor Hellman absent and I vote aye. So we've got four ayes and one absent. Okay, so we have a plan going forward and the just to for as far as the protocol, I think I should say that I've been 17 is continued to the April 7th council meeting. That's what it says here, April 7th. Anyway, it's continued. And Chance, yes?
I I just wanted to ask one question about future items for agendas. I I brought it up with Town Manager Toy on Tuesday, but as you all know, we've been receiving a lot of emails about the Cascade Bridges project. And I was wondering if y'all would be interested in having the county like Max Corton come and give us an update on on where the everything is at. And so so the public could be become aware of where that process is because it has been a long process. And I'm thinking some folks might not recall how long of a process it's already been.
Didn't they having a meeting tomorrow night on this? They're having a meeting.
They actually are.
It's tomorrow night.
Okay.
But I but I I do think I do think Councilmember Cutrone raises an important point. And that is that we do that we do invite the county to come in and give us a presentation for our community.
And Garrett, were you had you heard about Garrett? Garrett, yeah, had you any you had heard some thoughts about that as well? I'm just wanting to get your thoughts about that as well.
Yeah, I was just what I was trying to do was look at their comment period for the environmental online. But yes, the county's fine with coming on March 17th. That'd be another item to provide on the project. We can give a little history about the council action back in 2016 and 17. And if they're still accepting comments on the environmental, they could also accept them from the public at that time.
So I I mean, we're not can we do we really have to add that to March 17? We have this idea of the climate action going to seven, moving on to the police chief issue, which is probably going to be quite a lot of comment and the housing issues. I really think we should just make a better effort to inform people about what's going on tomorrow night. I mean, are we really going to put this on March 17?
What what about putting out a town newsletter or just a town emailing first thing tomorrow about the event tomorrow night so that people know about that? Would that and then maybe find out from that whether there's still? I mean, I don't know how we would find out how much interest there is in town about discussing it. Thing in town is that we the a previous council before I was on the council, before three of us were on this council, it was it was already approved by this town. But now there's an issue about mostly, it seems like about the parking in the neighborhood. And that is because with COVID, we've got so many more people using the open space that, you know, so it's kind of kind of a complicated thing to revisit. But the county is doing taking input on it and people are doing that.
Sorry to interrupt. I'm wondering, Garrett, are you able to see when the comment period ends?
Yes. So sorry, I have two computers. That's why I have to turn.
That's okay.
But yes, we did in the newsletter, put a little blurb in there and tomorrow's meeting is their public meeting for comments, but I believe the end of their common period is. Well, you know what? I I I actually have to go a little further.
It was a 30 day. It was a 30 day comment period and there have been requests from people asking them to extend that comment period. So perhaps, Garrett, it's best that you find out. But it is if you're right, I mean.
March 19th. So March 17th is still within the comment period.
But I I'm also very aware of of what Councilmember Kohler is bringing up, which is like are we are we is that really realistic?
Well, you know, I also want to mention we had three meetings on this that at least two of us were on. And
Kind of workshop.
Yes, and it really right now is about the county's comments on their mitigated neck deck. You know, I appreciate that people in our community want to voice themselves or hear their voices. And it may be that they will extend the public comment period, but I think it gets more confusing. And so thank you, Councilmember Cutrone. I just think March 17th is too packed with critical things to and the county's not going to want to stay till midnight to do their presentation. Because I would say put them at the end if we're going to do it. I think we have too many important things to take up.
I I concur. Because really what that would what what that would what would what that would be for would be to hear the public's comments and the timing on that wouldn't work at that meeting.
Yeah. We wouldn't really maximize them at that point. All it would be would be to hear the comment and really the comment should go to the county.
Yeah, it's not. It's not before us.
What can you do? Yeah.
So it may be that one thing is asking the county if they would do another session potentially if they don't get the kind of turnout that they expect tomorrow.
That's a great idea.
Yep.
That's a good point. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let's.
Thanks for that suggestion.
Well, that will try to get the word out to people about the public comment period for the county and we'll see whether if if that see whether the county can do a session with us in town here.
No, I think we're talking about not doing it with us. The confusion is that is that no, we're I think the idea is if they want to do it another session, if they don't get the kind of feedback or participation, but not with us. I think there's confusion.
I don't mean with us. I I don't didn't mean, I'm sorry, I didn't mean us, the town council. I meant Fairfax that do a session in Fairfax.
Or that we could, I mean, if there's a if they don't get the turnout tomorrow, we just say, hey, it might be good to do a second one. And we can really promote it to because we're getting a lot of feedback in our emails. So.
So so much better point. Thank you, Chance.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Are we almost there?
I think we're really close. Is there anything, Garrett? Do you have anything on Town Manager's report?
Can I just ask the town manager? Are where are we on those evacuation maps, getting those mailed out to Fairfax homes?
We just have one last thing to do and then then it's us. It's all set to go.
So we think maybe in the next few weeks?
Yeah, I actually I don't remember how long it takes them to actually produce everything. But yeah, it would be next week. We would submit the order and then it's off it goes. And I don't know how long it takes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, we have a plan and we're ready to adjourn.
Thank you.
I don't believe we need a motion to adjourn. So.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thanks. Have a good night.